Oh, is he in the office today?
No.
Oh, cool.
Okay, thank you.
So he's at home, we want me to call him.
I am doing my.
You can use that phone.
Oh, do I have my script?
Um, it's really either way.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just go.
Are you working on that? For some reason, does that talk or a tablet?
I think Francis has one down there.
Okay.
We'll just do that if you don't mind using the cord.
Forward slash bargain. That are on my desktops and then.
Any questions? Instructions, Francis, you say on your screen.
It'll drop down and give you the live meeting option.
Yeah, Francis Linders, uh, do you remember who's going to be making presentations to make them co-host?
Zach is hosting right now and I've been messaging him to try to get people as he come on.
Okay.
Yeah.
There you are, I see you're connected. Absolutely. Oh no, you're fine, that's what we're here for. So you're gonna get this, no problem, bye-bye.
Hey Zach, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Councilman Greenwell, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
So, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so we can.
Francis, Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, Mark, we can hear you, thank you.
We're having problems getting in to vote. Someone text me my password.
Is someone helping Stoneblock?
That's where I just go.
I did not receive the invitation.
Hey Todd?
Yes, yes.
Are you serving as the mayor today?
I am, I am.
Great, okay. Hey, I don't wanna throw a curve at you, but, but on the first thing that we get into, the municipal facilities authority, I'd like to see if we could postpone that item number A, just for further discussion and research on my part.
Okay.
Okay. You'll defer that?
Yeah.
We'll do.
Thank you.
That's because I didn't send you one, correct?
Councilwoman Hammond, were you able to get into Prime Gov?
Yes, I was.
Okay, will you check your meeting date at the top, I'm not showing you all the way into the live meeting. You can see me now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm still recessing. Pardon?
Katie.
No.
Can you meet me?
Councilman Cooper, were you able to get into Prime Gov?
No, one moment, let me do that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, who's got the cat?
It's my cat, she has a lot to say this morning, councilman. Okay, I'm in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Todd, what are we waiting on?
Waiting on a stem cipher.
Okay.
Todd, are you, are you the, you're in charge?
I am, I'm the man today, we'll see. Mark, are you into everything? Stone cipher will do a voice vote, okay. All right, good morning, we're gonna go ahead and get started this morning. Before we call the meeting to order, City Manager is gonna read the participant instructions.
Thank you for joining the City of Oklahoma City's Video Conference City Council Meeting. We have a few announcements that we'll make regarding the virtual meeting. If the video conference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to today, July the 7th, at 1:00 PM via video conference. The agenda and documents are located at OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, a public hearing, or to speak on citizens to be heard, must call 405-297-2391, that's 405-297-2391, or you can text 405-219-7927. You can text 405-219-7927. Or you can email, city clerk, one word, cityclerk@OKC.gov. And this would allow you to be, to be able to speak. And speakers, anyone who decides to speak, or phones in to be able to speak, will be able to speak, but only allowed 30 minute, or three minutes, not 30 minutes, three minutes, to comment. Speakers will not be able to unmute themselves to be in the meeting, so you must sign up to speak with the city clerk on these ways that we described, and the city clerk will unmute your device when it is time for you to be recognized. Once you were unmuted by the city clerk, you would have to hit star six if you're on your phone to be able to join the meeting.
Thank you, City Manager, we'll start off today with the invocation with Pastor John Johnson in Exchange Avenue Baptist Church, Pastor Johnson.
Uh, thank you guys for having me, let us pray. God, we thank you so much for this day that you've made, we come before you now, we recognize that, Lord, the decisions that are going to be discussed today affect many people. And Lord, in this moment, in this time, we, we seek you for, for wisdom, we seek you for discernment. And God, we, we look to you for, for answers in how we can best serve our community, best serve our, our city. And, and Lord, I pray that you would help all have, have, be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to become angry during deliberations. And Lord, that, that the, the results of all the, of this meeting today would glorify and honor you. God, I thank you for our city, I thank you for what you are doing here. And, and just ask your blessing upon this meeting, and in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Johnson. With that, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Item three, from the office of the mayor, we have nothing today. Item four, the accept, receipt, and approval of the Journal of Council proceedings. I can take this item with one motion. We have a first and a second, go ahead and cast your votes.
All right, I'll give a yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's passed unanimously. Mr. City Manager, do we have any requests for uncontested continuances?
Yes, we do, on page one, under item six A, the revocable, revocable permit request, this item has been requested to be stricken from the agenda. On page 29, item nine A8, it's PUD 1755. We're gonna defer this item to July 21st, 2020, at the request of the applicant. On page 30, item nine A14, PUD 1768, will defer this item to July 21st. This is also at the request of the applicant. On page 32, item nine C1, dilapidated structures. Item C, we're gonna strike all these items from the agenda. Item C, 3217, South Clegrin Avenue. Item G, 3116, Northeast 13th Street. Item I, 635, Southeast 27th Street. Item, on item, on page 32, item nine D1, unsecured structures. Item A, and we'll strike all these items from the agenda. Item A, 3920, South Agnew Avenue. B, 4410, South Agnew Avenue. Item D, 2508, North Douglas Avenue. Item E, 5504, Foster Road. On page 33, item nine D1, continuing with unsecured, unsecured structures. Item P, 1317, Northwest First Street. Item Q, 1540, Northwest 16th, Northwest Second Street. Item S, 1328, Northwest Ninth Street. Item V, 1007, Northwest Tenth Street. Item W, 1128, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item X, 1511, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item Y, 1519, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item Z, 2421, Northwest Sixteenth Street. Item B, I'm sorry, item AB, 1215, Northwest Eighteenth Street. Item nine, on page 34, still under unsecured structures. Item AK, 3500, Southwest 26th Street. Item AL, 635, Southeast 27th Street. Item AP, 2645, Southwest 33rd Street. Item AV, 620, Southeast 39th Street. Item AW, 12744, Northeast 39th Street. Item BD, 2600, Southwest 48th Street. Item BE, 413, Southeast 49th, 49th Street. Item BH, 1301, Southwest 58th Street. Item BJ, 805, Southwest 63rd Street. Item BK, 1452, Southwest 65th Street. On, on page 35, item nine E1, abandoned buildings. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 3920, South Agnew Avenue. Item D, 2508, North Douglas Avenue. Item K, 1317, Northwest First Street. Item O, 1007, Northwest Tenth Street. Item P, 1128, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item Q, 1511, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item R, 1519, Northwest Eleventh Street. Item S, 2421, Northwest Sixteenth Street. Item T, 1215, Northwest Eighteenth Street. On page 36, item nine E1, abandoned buildings continued. Item Z, 635, Southeast 27th Street. Item AH, 12744, Northeast 39th Street. Item AL, 2600, Southwest 48th Street. And item AO, 805, Southwest 63rd Street. That's all the items I have.
Could you do me a favor? What was the item on the first?
That was on page 29, it's item nine A8, HUD 1755.
All right, item six, revocable permits, we had run a crest, it's been restricted, so we will recess. The council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. I know on item A, is Eric Winger available?
I am, Councilman, Vice Mayor.
Can you go ahead and speak to item A? I know that Councilman Greenwell had some questions on it possibly.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, this is a plumber report for the early line trail extension. It's a 2017 listed bond project, and it's a trail that was anticipated to 119th from May Avenue, Chelsea Chase, it's to connect the Fisher Elementary School that's on the north side of the road there. And the entrance underway, they're finding that there's not enough space for the trail, but they are recommending as a part of the plumber report that a sidewalk be constructed to make that connection. The original listed bond amount was about $700,000. The estimated cost for just the sidewalk construction is 196,000, so significantly less than what the original budget was for a complete trail. So the sidewalk would be constructed as the. So the sidewalk would be constructed as the trail. Can answer any questions if there are more?
Hey, Eric, this is David Greenwell. Thank you for that update. So, you know, the sidewalk certainly would be appropriate. I'm not sure the fact that it's going west towards May Avenue compared to going east to where there's a greater amount of homes makes sense. And really, can you take just a quick second in terms of describing what the Early Wine Trail is, where it will be located at?
So there is a greenway trail that is, that is already in place. It's actually on the south side of 119th. It was also constructed as a sidewalk, a wide sidewalk due to right-of-way limitations. The Early Wine Trail really is a connection more to the Early Wine Park, which is to the west of Fisher. I believe this was to help get the school connected to the park. The planning department is continuing to work on Bike Walk OKC. I do know that some additional connections and things are being considered. We do have another connection that is in the area. We know that through the maps, three projects that sidewalks were connecting neighborhoods also to Early Wine Park. But as they came south of Southwest 104th Street on May Avenue, they stopped. And we are working on a project that recently was actually recommended by the Bond Advisory Committee to extend that sidewalk and connection from 104th to Early Wine. So we'll have connections north and south to Early Wine. With this connection on the plumber report for the Early Wine Trail, we'll have a small east-west connection to the Fisher Elementary School, with possibly more connections coming from Bike Walk OKC when it's updated this year.
Okay, thank you. So this sidewalk, excuse me, will be on the north side of 119th from about midway between May Avenue and Pennsylvania going west towards May Avenue. Do you believe we could use the remaining funds, the difference between the cost of this sidewalk and the $700,000 provided for in the 2009 general obligation bond, to complete a sidewalk on the south side of 119th between May Avenue and the location of the Mid-America Christian College?
So once this, yes, I think that the answer is, once this project is completed, and if it completes for less money than the listed bond, we can use the remaining funds for additional projects with a similar purpose, so we can actually identify additional sidewalks, and that would be a candidate project, yes.
It's just that I understand that many of the students like to go to Early Wine Park, and unfortunately, one of them, at some point, time was hit by a vehicle, and providing a sidewalk on the south side of 119th from their campus down to May Avenue would certainly go a long way, I believe, in providing additional safety for the students.
We can definitely. Location, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Greenwell, did you have any other action you wanted to take with item A?
No, with that explanation, Vice Mayor, I'd like to pursue and let this continue on, to move forward. Thank you.
We have two citizens that have signed up to be heard on item D1, Municipal Facilities Authority. The first is Nicole McAfee. Nicole, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Nicole McAfee. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I'm a resident of the Crestwood Neighborhood in Ward Sticks. Members of the council, fellow residents of Oklahoma City, thank you for your time today. I am speaking here because of a problem you're funding. When you give the police astronomical budgets and no accountability, black kids playing in Oklahoma City are more likely than anywhere else in the country to become the next hashtag. Officer Kyle Holcomb, whose attorney's fees this resolution contemplates, didn't even give a full second between ordering a child to drop what the officer claims was a fake weapon. The child said he was holding nothing and shooting at him four times. It was sheer luck the kid survived. But black kids in Oklahoma City shouldn't have to grow up worried the folks charged with protecting and serving them may accidentally murder them because of the color of their skin, makes them a perceived threat from the day they're born. As in all of the recent attempted murders or murders of black men by police, the officer faced no criminal penalties. So now, a family whose lives were forever changed by Officer Holcomb's attempts to kill a child playing only have the recourse of civil litigation. So I'm asking you to vote against this resolution today. I'm asking officers face some sort of accountability, some liability on their own to think twice as members of the most lethal police force in the country before they risk taking another black life in Oklahoma City. If you believe Officer Holcomb was justified in his rapid succession of shots with no time to follow a command that could have killed a 14-year-old, you'll vote in favor of this resolution. But no, you're condoning the unnecessary escalation of force by law enforcement when you do. You're saying Officer Holcomb's material comforts matter more than the life of a black child in Oklahoma City. You're saying the lives of your black constituents are expendable, and with that, I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is May Veripah. I hope I'm pronouncing that somewhat closely. Is May on the line? What else here? All right. Any other comments or thoughts from council on OCMF A?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Hammond. I'm curious if our legal department could maybe explain a little bit more about how these, I guess, hiring of a private firm to represent employees kind of works and why, why we're, why the city does that. I don't know if Kenny or Amanda could speak to that a little bit.
Sure. I can answer that. Unfortunately, someone has turned off my video. My name is Amanda Carpenter, Deputy Municipal Counselor. I can answer the question. Oh, they're going to start my video, I guess. Okay. The state law, specifically the Governor of Tort Claims Act, and then Title 11, requires that a municipality defend or pay for the defense of an employee who is sued for actions that are either done or not done in good faith in the course and scope of their employment. And so in this case, we have an officer who is working within the course and scope of his employment. So state law would require us to provide that defense. Also, Article 26 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement also requires that we pay for or provide the defense of our employees that are working within the course and scope of their employment. Until we have any sort of evidence that he's not working or she's not working in the course and scope of their employment, we have that legal obligation to pay for the defense or provide that defense. If at any point in time, the evidence is provided or the facts come up in the case that it is not within the course and scope of the employment, we would bring an item back to this council for the cancellation of that contract and for the payment, cancellation of the payment for those defense services.
And is there a reason that it needs to be both in state law and as part of the collecting, collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police? Is there a reason for that redundancy, or?
No, the fact that it's in state law is our legal obligation. I note that it's in the collective bargaining agreement just as additional information for you all. At some point, and unfortunately, I don't have the history on that, but at some point, it was negotiated into that collective bargaining agreement. But the state law is what requires us to pay.
And where does that money currently come from? Does it come out of a certain departmental budget? Is it just absorbed in some budget somewhere?
Yeah, this is Craig Freeman, City Manager. I'll answer that question. Basically, what we do is each year, we transfer funds from the general fund. It's, we have a department called non-departmental, and it's where items are budgeted that don't fit in other specific departments because it's Representation Fund that's in the MFA. It's a multi, we allow to have a multi-year contract. That's why we put it in the MFA, because that way we can, a lot of times, we'll have these cases that extend over fiscal years. So we do it out of the MFA and gives us the flexibility, but it's representation for employees that are sued for acts on the line of duty. And so we transferred out of the general fund each year an amount each year and have funds there available to spend from the MFA.
And is there ever like a report hold of how much we're expending on these types of cases?
We have that information available that we could pull. We don't have a formal report that we do on that, but we have information available that we can pull.
If I could receive that, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure, be glad to do that.
And somewhat similarly, I know I had asked for some information about when a case like this, whether it's a police officer or even like line maintenance or, you know, when utilities may be out and someone wants a claim settled for us accidentally hitting a line and that's private property, where do those payments come from?
Sure.
And so whenever we settle cases, the City of Oklahoma City pays its judgments through the sinking fund. So we would put that judgment on the tax rolls, and it's paid out over a matter of three years. And unless it's, there's other mechanisms to, in order to receive payment faster for assigning it, for instance, to our Employee Retirement Fund. But the judgments of the City of Oklahoma City are paid out through the sinking fund on the tax rolls.
I don't know what those words mean. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. It's the property taxes that come in to, through the state of Oklahoma that are used, a portion of that are used to pay those judgments off.
Okay, and is that, because I know we can't use property tax for general expenses. Is this something that we, people vote on at some point, like with our bonds that are property tax-based, or how does that?
This is provided in state law that the only two uses that cities can have of property tax is to repay general obligation bonds, which, as you pointed out, is something that's voted specifically by, approved by voters. And then for judgments against the city, we can use property tax for that, for that purpose.
Okay, okay.
In fact, by state law, this is the only way that judgments can be paid.
Oh, really? Oh, interesting. Okay, only way. And is there a way for us to receive a report on when those sorts of judgments are paid of how much and how long it's taking us to pay them off, that kind of thing? Essentially, I'm trying to get at how much this is costing taxpayers.
And I know we talked about this before, about pulling this information, and this would be the information that we have on the judgments that are paid. It's any kind of judgment against the city, so it could be something where it's a pothole payment, you know, something that's going out on a pothole claim that someone had severe damage to their vehicle. It's determined that we had prior notice, anything like that. And so that was the difficulty, I think, in dividing out between where it's representation of the individual actions of an employee, whether it be driving a vehicle or something like with a police officer. And so we can get that information. We've got it in large quantity. You know, we've got all the data, so we can pull that information and make sure we have that for you as well.
Is there a way going forward that we can, like, because I, and I know you said that it kind of, it's over time, so it gets a little complicated when it's, you know, multi-year payment, or we're paying it off in multi-years. But I'm just curious, if there's a way for us to specifically say, you know, this was related to X department or X type of claim, so that that information is a little more easily accessible on a regular basis?
Yeah, that's something that we can evaluate. We've had some discussion about that after you'd asked that question, because typically, we end up and it's a claim that goes in the system. It's the way we're tracking the claims, and we pass it through the financial system. It doesn't have that specific information, but we'll look at that and see if there's something. I mean, we definitely do it. We just haven't done that in the past. And so we'll look at that and see what we can do to get better information that would relate it back to a specific department.
Okay, and so in this case in particular, it sounds like our police department has essentially said that, yes, he was working, this officer was working within the scope of his duties. I guess my question from that is, at what point does that not become the case? Because especially the, when I went back and read an article about this in this particular instance and watched the footage, you know, that less than a second opportunity to respond to a command. I'm just curious where that sort of lined out in our, whether it's our policies or our training, that that's the appropriate, like, acting within the scope of appropriate duties?
So obviously, we recommend that if there's specific questions about the facts of this case, that we go into executive session to discuss this. But generally speaking, when a lawsuit is initiated, there is a petition or a complaint that's filed that lays out the litigation causes of action, what they're suing us for. And we take and our provided information from the police department, we're provided information from whatever department is involved in the litigation. We look at that information. With the police department, there's a little bit more information because they go through the process of an internal investigation. Also, they go through the process of presenting the information to the district attorney, who in this case has determined that there was no charges to be filed. And so the municipal council's office looks to see if there's a potential conflict of interest. In this case, we have no evidence of a potential conflict of interest. Now, as we go through litigation, we do what's called discovery, which is depositions. We get all the documents from all the parties. We look through that. If there's any information that comes up, at that point in time, we would bring an item back to council if we believe there's a conflict of interest due to not working in the course and scope of the deployment.
Okay, and, okay, I felt like I had one more question, but I kind of lost it in lots of new information for me. Is there, so in the state statute and in the contract, the collective bargaining agreement, there is no stipulation that this has, the payment for this defense has to come just from a general fund. There's no carve-out to say it can't come from a specific department's budget or anything like that?
The statute and the collective bargaining agreement do not speak to the source of funds, only the requirement to pay.
Okay, that's all, that's all my questions.
Good morning, everyone. So, a couple things, and I just want to be very, very careful with my words here because I understand that this is a, very specifically a legal matter. So the first thing I would like to say is, I read, oh, I also read an article about this late last night from a national news source, and yeah. I don't, I don't know. I'd like to learn more, and I'd like, I don't, because I learned more late in the game, like just, you know, about 15 hours ago. I really do feel like it might be worth all of council's time to hear more details the way that Amanda just described an executive session would allow for. I would really like to, I'd like for all council members to hear more specifics regarding the litigation. Please. So, yes.
So, what do you want to make that as a motion on item D1 to move it into executive session?
I would please. Motion to move into executive session.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please go ahead and cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer? Councilman Stonecifer?
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Yes, I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the delay.
Sorry, sorry. The item passes. The item passes 7 to 1. Item D, item D will be moved into executive session. Into the docket, we will go into executive session to discuss that item. Any other comments on any other, on any of the other items under OCMF A? Any other comments on any other, on any of the other items under OC MFA? If not, I would take a motion.
Of the items.
First and second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes, please. Wait, I'm sorry. Please, okay. Never mind.
And it's passed unanimously. We'll adjourn as the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Any comments or questions on any of the items under the OC PPA? If not, I'll take a motion. For first and second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it's passed unanimously. We'll adjourn as the OC PPA, PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Any comments or questions from the council on these items? If not, I'll take a motion. Have a first, second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes, please.
And it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting. Item seven on the consent docket. Are there any items that council members would like to discuss?
I have one, AW.
And I need, I would like to separate, a separate vote on item A B. I'll need to just refuse myself from that.
Which one was that, Joe Beth?
A B, as in Boyd.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, we also have, we have brief remarks or presentations on two items. One of them is on A B, the one that Councilman Hammond just pointed out. We'll have a brief presentation on that one and also on B E.
Yes, if we can pull out B, B Y.
And the councilwoman, nice that you want to, on B Y, did you want to discuss that or separate vote?
Just, just got, just had a question.
And then also, yeah, B C. Would just like to have some discussion on that one.
All right, is that it? Why don't, Mr. City Manager, why don't we go ahead and do the presentation on A B? And then we'll let Councilwoman Hammond step out of the room.
Great. Jared Shaded with the Planning Department is just going to give a brief presentation. This is an item that we do every year, but it has so much of an investment in these different programs. I thought it'd be worthwhile to have him give us an overview on the program and how these funds are being used.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jared Shaded. I'm the homeless programs planner for Oklahoma City. This item will approve our continued care program grants for the next year. Well, for actually for 2020, it's a little misleading because it says 2019. These are always a year behind. The competition was last year and they'll be contracted this year and all go the same way next year. Continued care is what HUD, the term they use to describe your service area. For us, that's Oklahoma City. That's our service and planning area. The rest of the state is also broken up into different continuums. We are currently the highest performing continuum in the state, which we're pretty happy about. The program funds will go towards permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless citizens. Those are the people who are your worst case scenarios who've been on the streets the longest. Our providers use a, the same assessment tool for every client that comes into the system to determine their vulnerability. The more vulnerable they are, the higher a score they get and they go on one list that the whole community uses to house clients. Once a week, we meet with our service providers and they will parcel out clients who are at the top of the list and the, and the highest need based on who's got units and who has case management. This is a different system we've used in years, about five years ago. Now, everybody combines their resources to get people housed. Previously, that's not the way it was done. They would only use their resources and house. This is just a faster, more efficient way to do it. This program funds all of our permanent supportive housing pretty much in the city. And this will keep it going for another year. We are hoping they're not going to make us actually compete this year, but we'll just renew it, but we don't know yet. With this, we won't have to worry about that at least for quite a while. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jared.
Any questions for Mr. Shadie? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on item A B. We have a motion in a second. Please go ahead and cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Vote yes, please.
And the items passed unanimously. All right, the rest of these, I think we'll go in order with Councilman Griner, item A W.
Yeah, this is a ODOT project for improvements to State Highway four. This is just a, a project that I get a lot of calls about and people who live out there really want this highway to be improved and be more safe and so do I. And so I just always mention it that this is our role. It's just accepting easements right now. And so it is an ODOT project, but we, we are playing a role in it and that the construction is a plan to start until 2023, but work is being done and we're progressing on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item C, Councilwoman Hammond?
Sorry, getting caught up on my, where my agenda is. B C. Yeah, I was just curious if, and actually I realized, well, so yeah, first to start with B C. I'm just curious if we can have staff speak to this a little bit more and kind of get an update, I guess, on the, what staff time for the Alliance for Economic Development has been spent on these programs. And part of it might be, I just maybe don't know what their time costs, but because from my understanding that we had already maybe allocated some money for administration of these programs. And I wasn't sure if this is just a step in that process or is this additional administrative money for these programs?
Yeah, so Joanna McSpadden, our economic development manager is on the line. She can talk to this. Kathy O'Connor is also on the line with the Alliance for Economic Development. This is basically an update on the agreement that we had for the management of these programs. And this is under the Small Business Continuity Program. We've actually made a couple of changes on here. One, to make it eligible, I mean, to make sure it's clear that it's in relation to the, to the COVID pandemic. And also then to clarify what we were doing on paying administrative fees as well as authorizing the reimbursement of funds. It was in the program, it was, it was contemplated in the program that was approved by council previously, and this is for the GOAL funds. But I'll let Joanna go through this and speak to it and then Kathy can speak to questions that you may have specifically about administration of the program. Because we agreed with the Alliance for them to administer the program on behalf of the city.
Morning, everybody. Joanna McSpadden with the Finance Department. Councilwoman Hammond, you're right. This is kind of a step in that direction with the admin funds that were initially allocated from the first round of funding out of the GOAL bonds. If you'll remember, we allocated five and a half million with 500,000 of that to be set aside for administrative costs. So the item B C is basically an amendment to our existing contract with the Alliance, their annual contract. And the, the funds allocated in this amendment, the 330,000 is allotted to pay directly to those technical assistance contractors that were part of that program. And so that would be paid just directly to those third party folks that are helping with that part of the program. And then 60,000 of it is for kind of administrative costs, marketing, and then time from the Alliance. And Kathy can help discuss this, but I mean, that time was help desk, managing emails, obviously helping to design the program and working on the applications and all of those types of things. So.
No, I think that's, that's, cover is kind of what I was curious about. So that, unless, I don't know if anyone else has any other questions about that. And just while we're here, I forgot to ask about this one, but since I have you, Joanna, I also wanted to ask about B D one.
Sure.
And in particular, I, looking at it, it appears to be just that annual contract that we typically have with the Alliance. But I was just curious about the history of us using MAPS three use tax for economic development around MAPS projects and kind of what that means, looks like. Have we done this before? Is this just an ongoing thing that we do or is this new?
No, it's not new. So this has been ongoing kind of as part of the MAPS three program. And really in the, in the contract, most of it has to deal with land development, land acquisition and those types of tasks involved with those MAP three, MAPS three projects. Kathy could of course go into some really specific detail, but, and I, I'm pretty sure that the 100,000 has been pretty static over the last, you know, four or five years. But yeah, that's what that portion is for. And you are correct, this is their annual contract for next fiscal year. So for FY 21.
Okay, no, that's, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanna.
Thank you. Next item for discussion was B E. I apologize, I didn't capture who wanted to speak to that.
Yeah, so this is our, an agreement that we approve annually for, it's an agreement for where the city's helping to support bonds that are issued to the Economic Development Trust. We'll have another item that comes at the next meeting for other trusts that we provide support. But I asked our finance director, Brent Bryant, to give us just a brief overview on what this means. It's just something that it comes to us annually, but I want to make sure that we're clear what we do as a council that provides support that allows some of our trust, in this case, Economic Development Trust, to get better bond, bond rates when they sell their bonds.
Yes, good morning, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. As the city manager said, this is an annual item and that's related to the Economic Development Trust outstanding debt. When the trust went out to market, went out to the market to borrow the funds, they were able to get better rates with the city providing an agreement of support. And so all of those that provided the, that didn't end up loaning us the money, did that on the basis of the city providing an agreement of support. Agreement of support has to be renewed on an annual basis. You will typically sometimes hear the term moral obligation, where it's typical that one trust, one city council can't obligate another. So when you go out and, and this is understood in the marketplace where the city will go out and provide these agreements of support. One of the benefits of that agreement of support is basically is if the revenues that we've designated to repay this debt are not sufficient in any given year, the city would step in and provide the funding to make those debt service payments. At this time, we have to, like I said, we have to do this on an annual basis. And typically when we do this, when the city provides these agreements of support, it provides us better rates, which provides us a better rating for our bonds when we do them. And so what we need today, what we're only asking you to do is just to approve this resolution to extend and renew the agreements of support through June 30 of 2021. I'm happy to answer any more detailed questions if you'd like.
Thank you, Brent.
All right, last item for discussion was item B Y. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I was, I was looking and noticing where we were doing a project for the final acceptance and I'm, it's actually happening right now as far as the work. And I was curious to see, I, I see it's just from I 44 to Northeast 38th Street. And I'm, I'm just curious if we were going to finish it to 36th Street or are we just going to pause it at 38? If Y, I, I guess I just need to know the history of, of why this specifically, starting at 38 to I 44 from Lincoln.
Eric, are you on the line? Can you answer that?
Craig, this is Eric Quinter, Public Works Director. This is actually a MAPS three project and I need to look into it a little bit closer. But speaking on behalf of MAPS three, when they went through the subcommittee process, certain projects were identified for just the use of the MAPS three funds. It's not to me, additional projects aren't planned, but I just need to do a little more research and see if there's some, some new projects in that area, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Eric. Is David on the line? David Todd, are you on the line? Can you speak to this?
Yes, I am.
I'm, I'm sorry about that, David.
Well, like Eric said, we, we did specific pieces. We'll have to do some, some research to see where we on the, on the list. The, the MAPS Subcommittee and Advisory Board developed a, a, a list of prioritization on sidewalks. And, and that has since been revised because of better streets, safer cities and all the things that have happened in the last eight years since that has been created. So we can look into that and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stone?
Yes, sir.
There was an item here. I just wasn't quick enough. It's an ordinance to be introduced. It's under, it's a item seven R. It's a R1 specifically. May I, I don't know if that's a, I'm not sure if this is an Eric or if it's a zoning specific question, but we had a a neighborhood meeting with the folk up there around this development, this proposal. And the neighbors are quite concerned about the traffic in their neighborhoods in terms of it being quite fast. And you all might remember me speaking about this area, literally from Morton, which is a street that runs east, west, from Morton, quite frankly, all the way down to Willshire. People will speed through the neighborhoods through from Morton to Hefner, and then once you get from Hefner to Britton, which is, you know, the Western Village Pied Piper neighborhood. They'll speed down McKinley. Then when you get from Britton to Willshire, the same thing starts to happen again, whether it's university, whether it's military. So the neighbors surrounding this proposed spot, or pud, excuse me, pud 1767, they, they, they were just concerned about any new development bringing even further traffic into their neighborhood. And one of the compromises, one of the things that made the neighbors feel better about this particular application was the applicant heard the neighbors' concerns about speeding traffic. So too did their legal representative. And I always talk to everybody who will listen to me about how much of a fan of speed tables I am and designing streets properly for pedestrians. And next thing I know, and I know we can't require applicants to do stuff, especially something that's just outside of where their application will take place. But this applicant actually went out of their way to say that they would put speed tables on Bell Air, which is a major through street from Hefner up to 115th, 115th being where the, the application will be. from Hefner up to 115th, 115th being where the, the application will be, the property, the zoned property will be. And I understand that there's been some pushback from, just, just, I'm not even sure from whom, about whether or not a speed table can be part of, of this application. So I don't, I don't know where to begin this conversation in saying I support the presence of a speed table on, on Bel Air. And if a private developer wants to, and again, I'm not requiring them to do this, but if they want to spend their own private money to help the good people up there between Hefner and Morton have a safer neighborhood, I, I don't really understand quite the opposition to that. And so it seems like this was something that was removed from the, at least last I heard, that we were removing the, the speed table from, from this, this application. And I just, I want to know where we are with that, and I wanted to see if I could better understand that. So I don't know if that's a JJ question, I don't know if that's a Bob Teener question, I don't know if that's an Eric question.
I think this is going to be a combination of Eric and Bob. So if it was something that was incorporated into the PUD, I think it'd be something that Bob can, can speak to. Eric can speak to the logistics of installing speed tables. And so I think it's going to be a little bit of both.
Okay.
So Bob, are you on where you could speak to the, the issue of whether or not that was taken out of the PUD?
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission was concerned, this is Bob Teener, Development Service Director.
Hey, Bob.
The Planning Commission was concerned about making requirements off-site in a, in a rezoning application. And additionally, that would be adding an improvement in the right-of-way that Eric is basically, the Public Works Department are required to maintain. I think it would probably be better if Eric and I met with the Planning Department. I think they all did, they did a, a review on traffic calming devices to try to slow traffic down. It'd probably be best for Eric and Jeff Butler and I probably to sit down on this one before it comes back to council on the fourth. Eric, are you on the line?
Yeah, this is Eric. So this is Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. I recall having this discussion, where we're at with the Public Works Department and working very closely with the Traffic Commission, is there are traffic calming devices that are being studied. They are looking more into speed cushions and speed humps. A traffic or a speed table is similar to those, but, but, but different. So they do have different design components, they have different maintenance components, as Bob mentioned. And so we're, we're going towards that direction. We did not have the ability to visit directly with the developer. We were working with a representative of the developer and offered them other traffic calming options, but I had not heard back from them whether they selected an option that, that we had already researched and reviewed. We just simply have not had the opportunity to come up with a standard for, for a speed table that we're comfortable with placing in the public right-of-way at this time. But that doesn't mean it's not something we can't consider more and possibly do in the future.
So what we can do, I think Councilman Cooper's offered that, that Bob and Eric and maybe Jeff, if it's appropriate, that they can get together on this one, have discussion with the applicant. And I think the item can go ahead and go through as it's introduced now, and when it comes back to council, hopefully we can have answers back to you even before the council meeting, of just what the status is, where we are with it, and what the options would be.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. I just did, you know, I've done Google searches of speed cushions and speed tables. I, I, I honestly barely see the difference between the two, but I'm happy to hear a little bit more. But I, I guess my, a couple things. I guess my default when it comes to conversations about traffic calming devices is, you know, sometimes I'll get an email from a resident that will ask for one of those flashing lights that tells people their speed. And my research has taught me, and I'm saying everything from the Congress from New Urbanism to Strong Towns. It tells me that we, we, when, when we get to the place where we have to put a flashing signal telling us, watch your speed, you're going too, going too fast, that somehow the design of that street is not where it needs to be. And that street, at the street design level is how we remedy these, these, these speeding questions, not with those signs. So I'm, that's where I learned more about, you know, our speed abatement possibilities and traffic calming. So I'm interested in, in either option, whether it's a speed cushion or a speed table. But yeah, I just, it, it's just, I cannot stress enough how important it is that we do something up there. And I just think it's cool that an applicant in the private sector heard those concerns from those neighbors and said, yeah, I know this is off-site, where we would do this traffic calming thing, but he understands that being a good neighbor is, this is an opportunity for him to show that he wants to be a good neighbor and to make that investment, and making sure that people, as they are coming off of Hefner onto Bel Air, heading toward his proposed development, that they're not speeding through this existing neighborhood to do so. Like, he understood that. And I just think that's great. And again, it's not a, I didn't say do this or else, like, I know I can't do that, nor would I. But the fact that he heard those neighbors and, and heard, heard my, like, hey, here are some options to think about. I just think that's cool. So yeah, I'd look forward to hearing a little bit more before this comes back, comes back before. The only other thing I would say is, I understand that, you know, a speed table, for instance, isn't, might not be already in the wheelhouse of what we were thinking, but there's, I just, it's, it's still something worth exploring. I would ask us to consider that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. With no further discussion on item seven, I would take a motion. We have a motion to second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item eight, the concurrent stock it. Are there any items in? We have one presentation in the concurrent stock it on item?
Item J, AJ.
AJ. It looks like we might have some citizens, no? Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from City Council? No? Okay. Mr. City Manager?
We had a question from a couple of the council members. We have an item on today that, on the concurrent stock it with the Economic Development Trust, where it's providing support for the First Americans Museum. And there have just been some questions, and I know some of the council members weren't on the council when we first initiated these agreements. It's gone back, I mean, years. And I've asked Brent Bryant just to give us a quick presentation, just to kind of walk back through some of the history of how we got to where we are, and then where we are in the process of the development of the First Americans Museum, and the commitments that the city's made in participation with this facility and the operations of the facility.
Good morning, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. I'm going to go over just briefly some history behind the First Americans Museum, and then we will get to the, what the, what the joint resolution is today that we're trying to accomplish here. Go to the next side, please. Yeah, the First Americans Museum, the creation of started back in 1994, so 26 years ago. We've been, since been working on this project for 26 years. The state, initially, the state was going to fund it, and they did that until 2012, when they exhausted all their funds and came to the city to seek our support and help to provide $9 million towards the completion of the First Americans Museum. In May of 2015, the state passed House Bill 2237, where the city and state would enter an agreement. And we did that. And we partnered with the AICCM Land Development Company, which is a subsidiary of the Chickasaw Nation. The city agreed to operate and maintain the First Americans Museum after the closing and then the transfer of the property. And we contributed our $9 million towards the construction of the project. As part of the consideration, the land surrounding the First Americans Museum was conveyed to the Land Development Company, also the, again, for redevelopment purposes. Construction to complete it is set around $65 million. And you can see there, there's a state, there's the foundation contributing $31 million, and then our $9 million. The completion, and then they also committed to provide additional funds in, if unforeseen construction costs for over $65 million. Where we are today on this, as part of that, the Land Development Company was going to provide us $14 million. Because when we studied and looked at this museum, we anticipated that it would need some form of city assistance for, for many years after it started, after it was opened back up. And so they provided us $14 million from the Land Development Company. And as a result, we entered into an agreement with them through the city and the foundation entered into an agreement to operate the FAM. The disbursement schedule, the $14 million was to provide, provide initial operating costs. And so each year, we receive this money from the Land Development Company. They provide it to the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, and then we provide it to the foundation, which runs the museum. For the last three years, we provided, the, the Land Development Company's provided us the million and a half dollars, and then we've subsequently provided that, those funds to the foundation for FY 18, 19, and 20, with the anticipated opening in May of 21. The agreement that we, we have with them says that we would provide up to $4 million to help pay many of the pre-opening marketing costs, relates to in the, in the opening fiscal year, which is this current fiscal year. So what we're seeking to do today is the $4 million, getting authorization to do that. And then after that, in FY 22 and 23, we'll continue to receive funds from the Land Development Company to provide the assistance. And then in '24, will there be $50, a million and a half dollars left? With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Hey, Brett, this is David Greenwell.
Yes, sir.
What's the status of the completion of the facility and the opening of the museum?
The staff continues to push for all project partners to finish their work on schedule compatible with a May 21 opening. There, there are a number of exhibition components dependent on partners outside the foundation's control. And some of the partners, particularly the museums, have been, have been slow to resume full operation. So I, I believe there may be a COVID-19 impact on this, is that, that's what the foundation is telling us. But we are still optimistic that we may be able to make the May 21 opening. But I can get, I can reach out to them and get more detailed information if you'd like me to.
Well, just from a personal interest standpoint, so construction or renovation is continuing on at this time, as far as you know?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, without any further questions or comments, I'll take a motion on item eight. A motion and second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
You hear me? Yes?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, thank you. And it passes unanimously. With that, we'll move to items nine, require our separate votes. Item nine, A1, 1021 South Rockwell Avenue, from R1 Single Family Residential to I-2 Modern Industrial District, Ward three. Councilman McAtee? Councilman McAtee, you're still muted. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the delay. Is the applicant present?
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So this is an application that it's a bit unusual in that we're seeking to go to I-2. 75% of the subject site is already zoned. I-2, it's unknown why a piece of the western side of this site was zoned R1. So what we're seeking to do is to zone it I-2, which will be compatible with the balance of this site as well as the adjoining properties. So staff recommended approval, Planning Commission was unanimous in the recommendation for approval, and we would ask for a second.
Thank you, David. Just a, a comment in passing. This particular intersection, if you will, going to the north, where it, Rockwell hits I-40, that whole area has been a challenge over the year for various reasons. And I would hope that the rezoning that your applicant is doing here would be put to a positive advantage, and maybe some, some improvements of what goes on at that particular area. So with that being said, is there anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir. No one's signed up.
And I would move for approval.
A motion and a second. Please go ahead and cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes, please.
Councilperson Hammond, can we get a vote, please?
It is not popping up for me. It's just still saying waiting. I've hit escape a few times. But I'm voting yes. So if that works, then we can do that.
That'll work.
Okay, thanks.
And it passes unanimously. Item 982, 3701 Northwest 192nd Street, from AA Agriculture District, R1 Single Family Residential, Ward eight.
Thanks Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance on final hearing for rezoning, a property located at 3701 Northwest 192nd Street, from AA Agricultural District to R1 Single Family. It will permit residential development. On April 23 of this year, it was approved by the Planning Commission. I'm not aware of any protests. Has anyone signed up to speak about the ordinance?
No, sir. Not one signed up to speak.
Move for approval of the ordinance, please.
Number first, second, please. Cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond, were you able to?
Councilwoman Hammond, were you able to pitch back?
Yeah, it's still not popping up, but I'll vote yes.
Councilman Stonecifer, are you able? Yes, you are.
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Next item up is nine, A three, ninety-two oh one South Center Road. From double A Agriculture District to C three Community Commercial District. And it says Ward three, but it's actually Ward four. We do have someone that's signed up to speak, Kara Keegan. Kara, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Go ahead.
I just wanted to be available if you had any questions. I am, as you see the applicant, Jean C. Stroud, he's here with me, that is my father. So we just wanted to be here in case you have any questions. And we're sure hoping that we get to zone that commercial today.
Excellent. I, I think it's a great location for it. This is approved by the Planning Commission, recommended by staff. So I will move it for approval. A motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, it should, it looks like it should go through now. I think it works.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Counselperson Stonecifer, how do you vote? You're muted.
No, it will. I think there's technical.
Yes, please.
Thank you, and it passes unanimously. Congratulations. Mr. Stroud, Ms. Keegan. Brings us to item four. Four thousand two South Sarah Road from R one Single Family Residential District, R two Medium Low Density Residential District, Ward three. Councilman McAtee, you're still.
How are we doing now? Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience. Is the applicant present?
Yes, again, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive. So this is an application for a duplex development along Sarah Road. This is a, a development that was disrupted by the turnpike. We had a large master plan community totaling around two hundred and eighty acres. And the turnpike came and cut it in half. And so we were forced to kind of get back to the drawing board and redesign both the east and west side of what is now the turnpike. So on the, the southwest portion of this development, we are going in with a duplex development. I did talk to the councilman, and the question was raised about how these children will get to the school. We are gonna have sidewalks throughout as well as sidewalks along Sarah. So this is in conformance with the Conference of Plan, as such, staff recommended approval. And Planning Commission did provide you with the unanimous recommendation for approval of this item.
Yes, thank you, David. In addition, we should note that the state is cooperating with the city in one and improving Sarah Road, and that work is going on as we speak. And it's just at the end of the conclusion of the work on the turnpike, which also comes in at Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street. So there's quite a bit of action going on here. Has anybody signed up to speak on this?
No, sir.
Hearing none, unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
A motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you, and it passes unanimously. Brings us to item five. Seventy-one twenty Northwest Tenth Street from R one Single Family Residential, Spud four thirty-seven. Ward one.
This is a, a application to change kind of a conglomeration of a different zonings into a C three. And it had unanimous Planning Commission approval, no protest. And once somebody signed up, I will move for approval.
Please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Item six, one, two, 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 four, Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street from double A Agriculture District, R one Single Family Residential, and R A two Single Family Two-Acre Rule Residential Districts, Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. David, if you would, brief the council a little bit on the discussions we've had getting ready for this meeting and then also for the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Once again, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive. So this is an application that, when it came before Planning Commission, actually required not only rezoning item, but also a Conference of Plan amendment. At the time that the Conference of Plan came into being, this area was not served by sewer and water. Therefore, it was listed as urban reserve under the Conference of Plan. The areas in the city that are listed as urban reserve in the Conference of Plan are areas in which the plan contemplates urban development at some point in the future, but not at the time when the plan came into being. The reason it was not urban low at the time the plan came into being was because we didn't have adequate sewer, water, fire, or police. Moving forward to now, we now have all of the provisions necessary for this to be urban low. And so what the action before the Planning Commission was, was to remove that urban reserve layer and allow it to be what was the underlying urban low intensity layer. Staff decided, in addition to the subject site, to also request Planning Commission to consider the quarter section to the east of the subject to also be lifted. And the Planning Commission did vote and decide to lift the urban reserve layer on both tracks so that it was then urban low. After that, the next item on the agenda was the rezoning application. And once the urban low layer was reserved, it was then properly designated under the Comp Plan for an R one application. This application is actually split into portion of it as R one and a portion of it as R A two. The R A two portion is what you see south of the river. That is a portion that will not sewer. And so we are doing a more rural style development, which was at staff's request, which we agreed to do. So Planning Commission then, with the recommendation for approval, did provide a unanimous recommendation for approval of the rezoning item. There are some people that have some questions about the development. There is a second piece of this, that is the plat piece. And when we go before Planning Commission, we will have a neighborhood meeting. We have continued the plat application from this Thursday's Planning Commission docket to approximately a month into August so that we can have adequate time to go meet with the neighbors and hear their concerns and address any if possible. So I have been in contact with several neighbors yesterday about this plan. And they were appreciative of our, of our efforts as it relates to Planning Commission. So this is the rezoning piece, again, coming to you with the unanimous recommendation for approval.
Thank you, David, and thank you for agreeing to meet with the neighbors. I know they were late coming to the ballgame, if you will, but they do have some legitimate questions. And so that will be covered, you and the neighborhood adjoining. That'll be covered in the next several weeks before the plating is discussed by the Planning Commission. Has any, anybody there come to speak on this particular item today? Reason I said that, there was a question, maybe somebody would like to come down and speak. But we told them their appropriate time for them to raise their concerns would be when the plating is discussed in a couple of weeks. So seeing nobody there, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
Thank you. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Brings us to item seven, twenty-eight sixteen Northwest Tenth Street from R one Single Family Residential and I two Modern Industrial Districts to I one Light Industrial District, I two Modern Industrial District, Ward six.
Yes, this is, just like you described, this is a property near, on tenth, near May. That is just really bringing the zoning into more conformance with the area around it. Everything around it is I one and I two, so I will move for approval when that pops up.
Motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Item eight was deferred, so we'll move to item nine, twenty-one forty South County Line Road from R one Single Family Residential District to PUD one seven five seven, Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. David, if you would, brief the council on, on what's going on here. This is an exciting development.
Yeah, absolutely. Once again, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive. So this is a P U D at Southwest Fifteenth and County Line. It is a mixed industrial P U D that we broke into two different tracks. It is under the Employment Reserve designation in the Conference of Plan. So industrial uses are appropriate and well within the realm of what you would expect in an Employment Reserve designation. We broke it into two tracks because the southern track is actually adjoining a piece that zoned R one. And so we continued it a few times at the Planning Commission level to have some detailed discussions with the Ward Planning Commission member, as well as another Planning Commission member who had an interest in the case. And we came up with some provisions within that track two to provide for what we believe to be appropriate buffers when track two develops. So some of those things that we accomplished were additional buffers on the southern line. We removed some of the intense uses that you might expect to see in industrial development. We limited where overhead doors could be located. We increased the building setback. We increased landscaping. So we heavily negotiated this P U D and ultimately were able to, to get to a unanimous recommendation for approval from Planning Commission. Staff likewise recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, David, any questions from the council? Hearing none. I, I would like to move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please go ahead and cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item ten, PUD seventeen fifty-eight, one oh nine two eight Southwest Fifteenth Street from Agriculture District to PUD seventeen fifty-eight Planned Unit Development, Ward three again.
Thank you, Mayor. David, if you would, this is a piece of property that is being zoned from the double A. The church has been a great citizen over the years, making their facility available for neighborhood meetings, taking an active role in promoting different projects in the area. And so with that, David, what, what is this move all about?
Sure. Once again, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive. So what the church has is, you know, it's a piece of property they've owned for a long time. They were there before many of the neighborhoods existed, and they now find themselves in a part of the city that is rapidly changing. The western border of the church property is the new turnpike. Along Southwest Fifteenth, there will be a full interchange there. And so now the church has an opportunity, because of the amount of excess land that they have, to rezone it, to turn it into a more productive use because of the change of the nature of this area. So this, again, was another P U D that we continued a, a time, I believe, perhaps, to, to talk to the Planning Commission member for the Ward and kind of negotiate what, what she thought would be some appropriate uses and appropriate limitations. And so what you find now is a, a mixed-use development providing for office, commercial, and residential type uses, all of which are compatible with the area. But more importantly, the church, the church is not moving. So they wanted to ensure that they had a P U D that will provide them long-term stability and a compatible neighbor when and if they decide to sell pieces off. So with that, the Planning Commission did provide a recommendation for approval. And we'd asked the same from you and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Any questions from any of the council? Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
And again, hearing none, I move for approval.
All right, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it's passed unanimously. Brings us to nine, A eleven, PUD seventeen sixty-three, one, two, three, oh, five North County Line Road from R one Single Family Residential District, PUD seventeen sixty-three. This is Ward eight, and we do have a Brad Reed that has signed up representing the applicant.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Said this is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone the property on County Line Road from R one Single Family to PUD seventeen sixty-three. This will permit a mixed use of residential and commercial development. It came before the Planning Commission on May fourteenth, twenty twenty, and the Planning Commission recommended approval subject to certain, a certain summary of technical evaluations. I'm not aware of any protests. Has anyone signed up to protest this?
The applicant is present. That's it.
All right, I'd move for approval, please.
All right, cast your votes, Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to nine, A twelve, PUD seventeen sixty-five, one, three, seven, zero, zero Deep Fork Point from double A Agriculture District, PUD seventeen sixty-five Planned Unit Development, Ward seven.
Yes, this is an application to permit the property to be split into two lots. And I know David Box is on the line. He's pretty famous this morning with all of these zoning cases. So if you want to speak to this, and I know there was a family that protested. And can you give me an update on if there have been any conversations and what was the results of that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So as you mentioned, this is a P U D that would allow what is now a little over seven acres to be divided into two lots. So one lot that would have a house on approximately five acres, and the other lot would have a house on slightly over two acres. Prior to filing the application, I advised my client it was probably best to go talk to all of the neighbors and see what the sentiment was of their neighbors. They were able to accumulate somewhere around twenty support letters from everybody. There was one lone dissenting neighbor. That individual did show up at Planning Commission and protest. But my client still continued to, to talk to their neighbor after Planning Commission. And since that time, the neighbor that was protesting has now withdrawn their protest and is no, no longer in opposition to the application. So now you, you have widespread support from all of the folks that live in close proximity to this. So Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application. And now, like I said, we are coming to you without any protest.
Okay, I appreciate you all working through that for that protester. So with that, I'm gonna ask that we move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
He'll be considered absent for the motion.
Thank you.
Councilman McAtee, do you have a voting button?
One minute, please. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion was by Councilperson Nice. And it's unanimous, Stone Cypher was absent.
Says, would you like to second this motion even though it's already, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah, I was doing the same with me.
Yeah, I thought it was just me.
I think you're out to get us, Todd.
That gets us to item nine A thirteen, sixteen hundred South McKinley Avenue from I one light industrial, I two modern industrial, and PUD sixteen-eleven Planned Unit Development Districts, to PUD seventeen sixty-six, Planned Unit Development District, Ward six.
Yes, it looks like David Box is, as Councilwoman Nice mentioned, is same as today. Could you please explain what is happening with this zoning application?
Yes, of course. Once again, David Box, five-twenty-two Call Core Drive. So this is an application for a piece of property immediately west of the Wheeler district. And what will happen through this PUD is allow for some additional residential development as well as a school. What we have done in the PUD is to transfer the development regulations of track five of the Wheeler PUD into this new PUD, so that it would again allow the school as well as some residential development. It's worth noting that the current zoning is I one and I two, which is kind of strange, is it's really kind of in the middle of a bunch of residential. So I'm not sure that today the council would consider an I one or I two rezoning application to be appropriate in that location. So we believe that this is in keeping with the Wheeler development regulations as well as a perhaps better use for that piece of property, getting it out of the industrial district. It is coming to you with a unanimous recommendation by the planning commission.
You, one of the I'm curious about one of the TEs, the first one actually. I'm curious why Southwest Sixteenth is being singled out as not having sidewalks, not required to have sidewalks.
Sure. So what we have agreed to do is we will place sidewalks on Sixteenth. If Sixteenth Street exists, a portion of the street just does not exist. And it's thought that there is a chance that it gets vacated. But we have agreed that if it is in fact a street, we will absolutely have sidewalks.
And I know, so this seems to be really the first part of this development that is leading over, I guess, past Douglas really into the existing neighborhood just west of this area. And I'm curious to know if there are plans by this developer to what the relationship with the neighborhood is and whether there's further plans to try to develop any other areas on the east, or sorry, west side of Douglas now that, yeah.
I'm sorry. At this point, no. At this point, this is, you know, the extent of the development plans. Ashley Terry with the developer, she may be on the line and can address any communications with the neighbors they've had. I'm not sure if she's on or not.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, this is Ashley Terry, thirty-three thirty-two Northwest Twenty-Fifth Street. You know, part of the Wheeler district development will include connecting directly to the neighborhood west of Wheeler. That includes vehicular and pedestrian connections into the neighborhood west, including Southwest Fifteenth, which will be the first connection that comes along with the school. As part of the school, the Western Gateway Elementary School Organization did a lot of outreach in the neighborhood west of Wheeler, including collecting signatures of support for the school, door knocking in the neighborhood and things like that. So there's been quite a bit of communication with the neighborhood west of Wheeler about this specific piece.
Thank you. Yeah, I know it was approved by planning commission, so I will go ahead and motion for approval when it comes up.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman McAtee, do you have a voting button?
I have a voting button. It's not working. I vote yes. There it goes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Item fourteen. Sorry, that passed unanimously. Item fourteen is deferred until the twenty-first. Brings us to item fifteen, PUD seventeen sixty-nine, eighty-eight ninety-six Wilshire Boulevard from R one, single-family residential district, PUD seventeen sixty-nine, Planned Unit Development District. This is Ward one, and Timothy Johnson has signed up. He's online if we need him to answer any questions about this item.
Yeah, this had a unanimous planning commission approval, had no protest. And if there aren't any protesters signed up or questions from the council, I will move for approval.
A motion and a second. Go ahead and cast your votes, please. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item sixteen, one-two-two-five Northwest Thirty-second Street from R one, single-family residential district, to PUD twelve thirteen, simplified Planned Unit Development, Ward two.
Yes, is the applicant or their representative available to speak to this particular application?
Yes, once again, David Box, five-twenty-two Call Core Drive. This is a SPUD application that is along Northwest Thirty-second Street, east of Classen. If you're familiar with the Lee Sandwiches Restaurant, that's right there at Thirty-second Classen. It is the lot immediately east of the restaurant. The application would allow a second dwelling unit to be built as a garage apartment type of structure behind the main structure. We spent some time with planning commission and giving them the elevations and the design. Staff does recommend approval. Planning commission also has submitted a recommendation for approval for this item, and we'd ask you for same, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Has anyone signed up to speak regarding this SPUD?
No, sir.
Well, seeing how it was approved with our planning commission, and there were no protesters present, I would move for approval. There we go.
All right, we have the motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Thank you. And items approved unanimously. Brings us to item number seventeen, one-five-one-two Rockwood Avenue from R four, general residential district, to SPUD twelve fourteen, simplified Plan Unit Development District, Ward six.
Yes, this went through both planning commission as well as the River Stockyards and Scenic River Overlay Design District Committee and was approved by both. And it's just for some mixed-use commercial development, and I will motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes, please.
Passed unanimously. Brings us to item nine nine A eighteen, six oh one North Rockwell Avenue from R three, medium-density residential, to O two, general office districts, to SPUD one-two-one-five, simplified Planned Unit Development, Ward one.
This SPUD was unanimously approved by the planning commission. There were protesters, but I think that it got worked out at the planning commission by removing some uses that were going to be allowed here. Francis, is there anybody who's signed up?
No, sir.
I think this is a good development, and it's compatible with existing uses, so I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Councilman Grainer, do you have a voting button? Thank you.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item nine A nineteen, nine thirty, northeast one-hundred-and-twenty-second Street from PUD one-four-eight-one Planned Unit Development District, to SPUD twelve sixteen. This is Ward seven, and Councilwoman Nice, Chris Gray, is available on the line if any questions need to be answered.
Okay, thank you. Chris, and you can explain to me, I know we already have an existing apartment complex there, so this is just really just adding to that property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so with that, I don't see any problem with adding additional units to the existing area where there are units currently. So with that, I will move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item twenty, eleven thirty-five Southwest Twentieth Street from R one, single-family residential district, to SPUD twelve eighteen, simplified Planned Unit Development, Ward six.
Yes, this is to permit some light industrial use. I do appreciate and see that they added some, because everything around it is R one, and I believe at least one or two of those lots are, do have structures on them, that they did add some screening and just some landscape buffers, so I will move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Councilperson Hammond, do you have a voting button?
Thank you.
Yep, sorry, it took a second for it to pop up.
And it passed unanimously. That brings us to nine A twenty-one, thirty-one-ten North MacArthur Boulevard from C one Neighborhood Commercial District, to SPUD twelve twenty-one, simplified Planned Unit Development in Ward three.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant present?
Not that I know of. He hasn't signed up.
What we have here is a very interesting hodgepodge of different zonings. We have R four next to it. We have residential. We have a major arterial street in the MacArthur Boulevard. We have a commercial, and hopefully this will clean up some of this and develop it in a positive way. If anybody here to object or have questions? Again, seeing none, I move for approval.
A motion and a second, please. This council, please record your vote. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Item nine A twenty-two, three-two-six Northwest Sixty-second Street for from R one, single-family residential district, to SPUD twelve twenty-two, Ward two.
Again, is the applicant or and/or their representative present to speak to this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item, Councilman.
How about that? It looks like this area, it's like it's compatible with what we're looking at, so I would, I would, it seems like it was approved by the planning commission, and I don't think there were any protests. Let me make sure of that. So, sorry. Nope, I think we're good to go. Sign me for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
All right, it's passed unanimously. Next item is nine B, two oh one, Northeast Fourteenth Street from R one, single-family residential district, to SPUD eleven seventy. It's in Ward seven, and Councilwoman Nice, we probably have, I didn't count all these yet. Looks like six people signed up to speak on this item.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, let's, I knew we expected that, so let's hear from those folks.
Okay, great. Is Alan Bennett on the line?
Yes, I am. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Well, maybe we would hear from the developer first in order to have response. His latest offer just coming last Thursday was to not build the eightplex, so we don't really know how to respond at this point. But not to take up a lot of your time, we initiated a petition here in opposition to this eightplex. It's totally out of character in our, in our small neighborhood. We're just a small community that's four blocks wide and three blocks deep. And as you can see from the zoning map, the inner core there is largely R one, but we have several R threes, six R threes, a number of R twos, and then the outer ring there is almost exclusively R two and R three. And those, those zoning mix, we appreciate that. We like that. We have the comfort with the fact that we have a mixed-use area. And then we have Mr. Rickball, who would like to convert an R one to an R four, not even just a regular R four, a SPUD R four, which an R one to an R four, not even just a regular R four, a Spud R four, which pushes back the easements, also reduces the parking. It's just not the right fit for our neighborhood. So we undertook a petition. Every resident within that three hundred-foot radius of his property signed the petition, save one who wanted to do her own research. And then community-wide, we had sixty-eight signatures in opposed to this. So you know, by our count, we have one in favor, one abstaining, and sixty-eight people saying this just isn't a good idea. Every resident signed, and we had to track down four of our non-resident landlords and absentee landowners. They also signed. Everybody we approached signed. So we're just asking the council that if indeed he's gonna move for a four-plex or something like that, let's get this Spud off the table. Let's get this eight-unit apartment tower off the, off the agenda. It's been deferred three times now. We'd like to have some settlement to this so that we can move forward. We'll be happy to talk with him in the future about his new plans. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Thank you for your time.
And I'll say thank you, Mr. Bennett, for your comments. And you are correct, and I apologize if Mr. Ickball is on the line, because I'm familiar with it. I should have introduced it as such. So thank you for, for that comment. But if he is on the line, I would like him to explain what he's wanting to do now, and then we'll continue with those who signed up to speak, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Councilperson Nice, we could not locate him online by his name or phone number.
Okay, well, I'll say this. I know he sent an email to us. It was probably, and I know he sent it to our city clerk's office, if I'm not mistaken, it was Wednesday or Thursday, that he wanted to defer and look at other options as far as the four-plex is concerned for the community and the residents and the neighbors to be a little more comfortable. We did have a conversation, I believe. It took place, if not late May, it was June, early June, with the neighbors and Mr. Ickball, and both sides were able to talk. We, we had a conversation, and he obviously took into account a lot of the things that he heard and decided to go back to the drawing board. But again, we are, we did leave it on the agenda because I understood that there were some neighbors who wanted to speak. So I want to ensure that they have the opportunity to have their voices heard on this, and then afterwards, we'll go from there.
All right, next on the list to be heard is Homalita McKnight.
Hello, this is Homalita McKnight, hoping you all could hear me.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to start at the beginning of this issue, which starts with the Planning Commission. I do want to bring up that we did submit five objections. One of them being from our neighbor Association Lincoln Terrace, and those were not mentioned into the planning committee, committee when they made this decision to approve it. This was during the COVID nineteen, the beginning, so most of us was under the understanding that the city was shut down and nothing was being heard. We were trying to address our opposition during the planning committee, and I just wanted everyone to know that we were not given that opportunity. With that, when we move forward, when we look at this, an eight-plex, it's not enough room with parking. This is on the corner of Walnut and Fourteenth Street. There's no parking on Walnut. That street is very busy. We do have a duplex that's being built on Fifteenth and Walnut, and even parking in that area is very difficult because there's no parking on Walnut and on Fifteenth. There is a parking, I mean, a bar hydrant there. Now, what we have been seeing in our area, which is small and quaint, is developers bringing in their ideas, which is great, but they're wanting to put a larger building on a lot that was designed for single-family unit. And we're just concerned about that because it doesn't give room for the neighbors. A house that was built next to me was for a single-family unit, and they put a four-bedroom, two-bedroom home on that lot. Now the gate, which had no room to build on a lot, is on my lot. And when they swing the gate open, it hits my house so hard that it knocks my windows. So it's, it becomes a neighborly problem with issues when developers want to put larger buildings on smaller lots that neighbors have to try to work out because it's just no more room on the lots once they put an oversized building on a single-family lot. And that's my take on it, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next up to speak, we have Shirley Denson.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
I want to start by thanking you all for your time. After listening and sitting in on your meeting today, it makes me appreciate your service to the city even more. So thank you. I would like to refer you to my opposition letter only, and I'm not going to take any more time. Just go ahead and read that, and I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Shirley. The kind words. Up next to speak is Amy Ayers.
Hello, councilmen and women. One second, we'll correct that audio. And Vice Mayor, glad to talk with you all for just a minute. I'll be very brief because I think our other neighbors have shared most of the sentiments that I would like to as well. You know, my wife and I, three years ago, made quite a large investment in this neighborhood. We purchased our very first home that we've ever owned because we loved the character, the quaintness, and the true family atmosphere that this neighborhood showed to us. We knew that there had been strong neighborhoods initiatives that really emphasized that community aspect of this neighborhood with the, with the park and with the street, I'm sorry, the sidewalks. And I just, I believe that since we've been working together on this project, and we've had three meetings with the developer and a meeting with Jamal, Kamal Pennington, and Councilwoman Nice as well. So we, you know, this has been one of the largest shows of solidarity that I've ever seen as we have worked through this effort with our neighborhood. Neighborhood folks, I'm very proud of.
Amy, if you can hear me, we lost your audio there for just a second.
I believe she was muted.
Were you all able to hear me, Councilwoman Nice?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, we missed probably your last couple of sentences.
Okay, really, the last thing I was just indicating is that I'm just very proud of our neighbors. You know, we are, as indicated, we're a tiny community, three blocks by four blocks. And it's been one of the largest shows of solidarity that I've ever seen as we have taken on this effort as a very small group of people who have not been extremely organized in this kind of fashion for this kind of project for, for for a long time. So I just, I want to thank you for your time and for Councilwoman Nice for the opportunity for you to try to meet with us and the developer recently, and I will yield my time to the next speaker.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, we have Nicole Lee. Nicole. Oh, okay. All right, next up, we have Cecile Edwards. And she's no longer online. And that takes care of everyone that I have listed that was to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. And again, I want to thank all of the neighbors for voicing their, their concerns. I know there was a concern, if we deferred it, that they had took the time off and they would not be heard. So that's why I wanted to continue to keep this on our agenda so we could make sure and ensure that the voices of our neighbors are heard. And I want to preface this with this is, this is what happens when you have a small, one of the strong neighborhood initiatives that come into our communities and without protections when they leave. And I'm really hoping, and I know I've said this a couple of times, because we, we saw what happened on Thirteenth Street with the approval of a Spud that truly should not have, have been placed or approved there because of the protections that should have been in place for these neighbors. Now, as we're looking at what Mr. Ickball is, is asking for, we do understand, one, he, his family owns this piece of property, and they do want to develop it. I think we all understand that. I do want to, I know in this aspect of us having the conversations that we had, commend him for at least listening and going back to the drawing board to see what else he could do. I apologize to our neighbors because it does seem like they're caught in the middle of, of just confusion and trying to figure it out. But he has, again, he reached out to me. It was late last week, just, and it was through email to our office in our city clerk's office to ask for it to be deferred. So I will defer one last time as he works through his process of wanting to develop smaller, because I know at the time when he brought this, it was eight to sixteen units, and because of the concerns of the neighbors, he has asked that he look at it again and try to find something a little more compatible and feasible that everyone can be okay with. So I am waiting for him to have those plans so we can all look at them together, and hopefully the next time, we'll be able to just meet in person and have a conversation. I'm hopeful of that, instead of going to talk over the phone. But I will ask that we defer this one last time until October, and that's the time he asked for that. And therefore, with this, we'll have a couple of months to work, work it out and discuss it and see how we can come to a better compromise for everyone. And again, I want to keep on our minds about what it looks like when you have protections in place after our strong neighborhood initiatives leave communities such as this. So with that, I am, my computer timed out, so I'm going to ask for us to defer until October. And Ms. Francis, I'm not quite sure what the date was that he gave.
I believe it was October twenty-seventh, that's our council meeting day.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we defer to October the twenty-seventh, and I'm, again, just waiting for this to pop up here.
We have a motion.
Second.
In a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
Councilman McAtee votes yes.
And it passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to item nine C one, Public Hearing Regarding Dilapidated Structures. And Francis, is anyone signed up to speak on any of these items?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to nine C two, the resolution declaring structures are dilapidated. I'll take a motion. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer? Francis, can you reflect the Councilman Stonecifer?
Aaron McAtee votes yes.
Yes, there he is. He's back.
Did you say yes, Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And it passes. Brings us to nine D one, Public Hearing Regarding Unsecured Structures. Francis, is anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to nine D two, which is the resolution declaring structures are unsecured. I'll take a motion. Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
Councilman McAtee, were you able to vote electronically?
Yeah, I voted electronically.
All right, thank you. And it's passed unanimously. Brings us to item ninety-one, the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Francis, is anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, sir.
All right, item ninety-two, the resolution declaring buildings are abandoned. I'll take a motion. We have a motion. In a second, please, please, afford your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
Thank you. And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item, item nine F, Master Development Agreement with Thirty-sixth and Lincoln LLC, Ward seven.
So this item was one that was presented previously by Kathy O'Connor, and this is just the approval of the master development agreement for the property at Thirty-sixth and Lincoln for the Homeland Grocery Store, and it was required to come back to council three different times, be at council three different times to finalize the transaction because it included a transfer of property. This is our final hearing.
Any questions or comments on this item?
If you don't mind, I just want to say that we are extremely excited about moving forward with this development, and I know for some of our neighbors that are going to be close proximity to this location, we'll be having neighborhood meetings with them so they can be informed and stay updated with, with the progress as well. So I am appreciative of, of our city and, and everyone that works so hard on making this happen for our community.
Would you like to make a motion on that, Councilwoman Nice?
Of course I would. I'll make the motion that we move forward and approve.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Item G is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority transferring property known as Old Fire Station number eighteen in the city to Oklahoma City Public Property Authority granting a quitclaim deed.
Yeah, so this, this item was brought forward to council and introduced several weeks ago. Presentation was provided by Chief Kelly, and this is actually to help with the sale, to allow for the sale of the property to the fifth quarter. And it's an organization that uses the station, had leased it previously, and they wanted to purchase the, the station. This transfers the property, and this is a final hearing on this one also, transfers the property to the Public Property Authority for that final transaction with the fifth quarter.
Any questions or comments from council?
I can comment on this one, too. I'm excited about this. This is literally going to be across the street, and it's already across the street from our new development for our grocery location and our senior wellness center. So it's going to be a great site to see just more lively folks and just life being brought back into this facility for our, our fire department and our fifth quarter who will be volunteering their time and services in our community and also bringing together our retired firefighters that are a part of fifth quarter to, to see their visibility. And I live across the street from one of those retired firefighters, and I know he's very active. So we talked a lot about, about how this can be a great thing for our, our city and our community. So we're excited about, about this as well. So I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nice, do you have a voting button? Thank you.
And it passes unanimously. Brings us to item H, Operation Agreement for Honorize Relief Fund Testing and Tracing Program with the Oklahoma City County Health Department.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, the next three items actually involve the CARES funds that the city has received and the, and the program plan that the council has approved. And this is getting us further steps into implementing this plan. So I've asked Kenny Sutel to speak on H, and then we'll have a couple of other presentations on I and J. But Kenny's going to present this item and just kind of give an overview of some of these next steps that we're taking on allocating and implementing the CARES Act Plan.
Good morning, Kenny Sutel, Assistant City Manager. Just as you'll recall, back on May 26, council approved a resolution that set out some broad categories for the expenditure of the $114 million that the city received from the CARES Act under the coronavirus relief funds. And it also authorized the city manager to begin negotiating and identifying, and negotiating with partners to execute these programs. And then on June 16, council approved a more detailed plan that further broke down those allocations into some more subcategories. And we talked about at that time, the next step would be bringing back these contracts with the different individual partners and contractors. So today, we do have items H, I, and J, and I'm going to talk about H, I believe. Joanna McSpadden will talk about I, and Aubrey McDermott will talk about J. But there will be a few more items coming back, probably the next council meeting related to our STAR program. And also, as we look for a partner to help us with the majority of the funds on the business support program, there'll be some, a couple more agreements coming. But, but today certainly, these are three of the most major ones. So on item H, this is the agreement with the City-County Health Department to operate our testing and tracing program. And really, don't have a whole lot to say other than this. You know, it really mirrors the subcategories that you all approved in the plan last council meeting. It has a breakdown of, you know, not to seat amount for each of those subcategories. It has the allowable types of expenses that City-County Health can expend the funds on. It also, the contract has various requirements for them to comply with the CARES Act. You know, the rules that, on what types of expenditures can be made, what types of review the city will do on those types of expenditures, as well as other auditing, reporting, and documentation requirements are in the contract. I did want to point out that the total amount of this contract is $14 million, $16,000. I wanted to point that out because if you recall, there was about 28 million or so in the testing and tracing program. There's about 13 million plus some administrative funds that are set aside for, for, you know, a reserve for future response if we see a spike in the fall or other needs that are larger than what we're expecting on testing and tracing. Those funds are not in this contract. It's our intent that if we had to amend this contract to raise the amount, we would come back to you with, with a contract amendment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the City-County Health contract.
Thanks, Kenny. Any comments or questions from council? If not, I would take a motion.
Vice Mayor, I've got a question. This is David Greenwell.
Go ahead.
So Kenny, I've been asking about this for six weeks now and have yet to get an answer in terms of filing against insurance companies for the cost of these tests. Can, can you tell me what the status of that issue is?
Yeah, give me just a second. I thought it is possible. My understanding was it's possible that some of these can be filed against certain insurance. If, if we're talking about our own, you know, certainly city employees. It's my understanding we're able to do that, you know, as far as other, other, you know, private citizens. It's really dependent on their insurance companies. But I believe City-County Health did say that that was possible with many plans. And I apologize, I thought we had answered that question, but I'll try to get some more information on that.
Well, let me just use this as an example. Let's say there's a parent and they've got five children. And they're all sick, and the cost to take one child to the doctor is $100. Now, without insurance, they have to choose which of the five children they get to take to the doctor. With insurance, then they pay $20 per child, and they're able to take all five children. So the use of insurance, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid, private insurers, is going to expand the resources we have for this testing and tracing. It seems like nobody understands the significance of that.
Yeah, and I agree. I think our intent was, you know, this, as it currently stands, would include funding for $50,000 test. To be the primary, you know, source of test funding in the city. That would be to supplement on top of what's happening in the private sector, other public health labs, et cetera.
Yeah.
And certainly, file against insurance.
States paying for it for free.
Right, and Kenny, I'm not suggesting that anybody that doesn't have insurance, we would not test them. I'm saying we would incur those costs. But all it takes is a simple request when the person comes up to ask for testing, to say, "Do you have health insurance? Can we see your card?" And this will allow us to file against you. There won't be any cost to you. It just enhances, increases the resources we have when we get reimbursed by insurers to perform these tests.
I'll, I'll continue to have discussions with City-County Health. And I don't, I think Phil May Tubby's on here. I don't know if he has anything else to add to this. But I know one of the issues is, there is some cost on our side of doing the, you know, reimbursements and billing and that sort of thing to insurance. And I, and we'll have to explore what that might be. I'm not real sure at this point what that, what those costs might be.
Yeah, Kenny, so I was just going to insert that, you know, we've been having regular briefings with the Oklahoma City County Health Department. And I think that would be a great place to ask some of these questions since they're really the ones who are so familiar with what all the different sites are doing, since there are, there's a lot of different partners involved. That I assume a lot of them are already asking for insurance when people are coming to get a test because that's pretty just normal check-in procedure when you're doing any kind of medical intervention, interaction. But, you know, we've been getting those, those briefings on a really regular basis. So that is an opportunity, I think, for anyone on council to interact directly with the county health department and find out those answers.
It was asked about six weeks ago to them.
Hey, this is Phil. I'm on. I wanted to bring up a couple of comments about that statement. So right now, any state level testing, which includes Oklahoma City-County, we're covered under the state's contract at this point as far as providing testing, and it is completely free. That's being picked up by the state. We're not aware of any states that are charging. The, what you do run into is when people go to a private lab provider, they do ask for insurance. And then they, they are asked to, to pick up that cost. But there are co-pays a lot of times with this. And, you know, we're, we're not wanting to exclude anybody for any reason for testing if they need to be tested, whether they have the ability to pay or not. That is, that is kind of our bottom line right now.
I'd say the same thing.
All right, any other comments, questions from council? With that, I would take a motion. All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher? You're muted, Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilperson Cooper?
And it passes seven to one. Item nine I.
This next item is still along like Kenny introduced on the CARES funding program. And this one is under the Resident Assistance, and specifically, this is to the Business Assistant portion of our CARES funding program. Again, working with the Alliance for Economic Development. Joanna McSpadden is going to give us just a brief overview of what the proposal is in this agreement.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. This is going to be a contract with the Alliance. This is very similar to the item that we talked about earlier in that this is now funding support for our next, our next round of business assistance that we're working on. As Craig said, this is under the Community Support category of the Corona Relief Program that Kenny and Aubrey have been working on. So this agreement is for $1,075,000. $1 million of that is for technical assistance, which is going to be very similar to the program we offered for the first round. And then we're also doing a, a category called retrofits, business retrofits. And what this will do is support businesses for putting in cleaning stations, sanitizing stations, those types of things, and also helping them to accommodate social distancing. Streeteries is going to be one of the, one of the options that would be provided in that category. And so each of those categories is $500,000 each. There's the $1 million, and then the $75,000 is for administrative services for that program. And that would consist of marketing, and then also services provided by Alliance staff. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Joanne. Also, we've had a resident sign up to speak. Teresa Crook?
I'm actually on the next item. I apologize.
On.
Teresa's our partner on J with the Oklahoma Communities Foundation.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks, Teresa. Hang tight. All right, with that, I will take a motion on item nine I. All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And it passes seven to one. At next, item nine J.
Yes, this item is also under the CARES Funding Program. And this is the agreement with the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. Aubrey McDermott will give us an overview of the proposed program. And then, as we noted, Teresa Rose Crook, Executive Director, CEO for Communities Foundation of Oklahoma is also on the line. And there are partners in this part of the program. Aubrey, are you on the line?
Am I unmuted?
Yep.
Hi, good morning. Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. This follows in suit with the other contracts in terms of just the way that the city has put together scopes of work defining specific responsibilities and all the administrative functions. So this is for the resident support portion of the Community Support Program. This is for $13,125,000. That includes the $12.5 million that are going to go for program expenses directly to residents, plus the $625,000 that was appropriated for project administration. So this contract is entering into an agreement with the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma, who, as explained in the program plan, will be setting up the Community Care Partners Center. So the scope of work is defined for them in Attachment A, in the scope of services, defines the community foundation's responsibilities to set up and track the city's CRF funds through, through the center, and also to be able to receive the private donations that can provide additional support for residents so that that center can really serve as a one-stop shop to direct people to resources even beyond the community, the city's coronavirus relief funds. The, the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma will be establishing this bricks and mortar location in downtown Oklahoma City. They've already hired an executive director. They're going to be hiring staff support, such as program coordinators, system navigators, and case managers to help people. They will also be entering into sub-agreements with different service providers, many of which are already administering CARES funds for the city for our community development block grant programs. These different agencies will be required to participate in a shared coordinated database with the city that the city already uses and maintains for other programs. They will be required to keep all the documentation to verify that they meet the CARES Act requirements, and they've been satisfied. The Community Care Partners Resource Center also does the screening of individuals' needs. They verify eligibility for different programs. They'll provide the technical assistance to walk people through the application procedures into the programs that meet their needs. They'll be responsible for tracking and cross-referencing what types of financial support have been provided to people so that we can ensure compliance. And they're going to be coordinating multiple pop-up locations around the city so that their service providers can be accessible to people in areas that may not be able to come downtown or go online and do applications through an online process wherever the phone. So just like our other standard documents, this covers all of the different requirements of them to enter into sub-agreements with partner agencies. It defines their administrative costs. The other thing that it, it requires them to do is we would be paying them in increments. The $12.5 million would be paid out and has to be spent down before they can ask for an additional increment of funding. So this way, it helps the city kind of keep on top of and track progress of the program and ensure compliance from our end. The contract also outlines all of the parameters that we discussed in the project plan about the eligibility requirements for applicants and the limitations for the use of the funds, including the $6 million that's going to be reserved for people that are at 80% of the area median income or about $41,650. Also sets a cap of $10,000 per resident and provides priority given to people catching up on utilities and providing utility assistance if needed. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And, and as we mentioned, Teresa Rose Crook is also on the line if you have any questions for her.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any comments or questions from council? We did have, or I missed it, we did have one citizen that signed up to be heard. Is John Pettis on the line?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. John Pettis, thirteen thirty-two Northeast Fifty Fourth Street, Oklahoma City, seven three one on one. I just have a couple of questions and a comment. First, I'd like to thank Ms. McDermott for taking my calls on numerous times and getting clarification on this process. Number one, is there a tentative start date for this? When you begin this program?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite sure that, that might be something Teresa might be able to speak to.
Yes, um, so we are looking at, um, trying to get, um, up and running by the end of this week, but definitely by the beginning of next week. Um, we, we're, um, getting our, our technology in place. Our physical, we're looking for desks. So if anybody has desk to donate, but, um, yeah, we're looking at, um, early next week, uh, kind of at our latest.
Okay. My next question, uh, you're needing desks. So you have a location pretty much picked out already?
Yes.
It's like downtown.
Yes, the little.
Hello?
Downtown.
Yes, 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 sir. Yeah. It's at Tenth and Broadway. So, um, on, um, public transit, uh, accessibility, um, close to downtown, but a little bit off for a little easier access. And then in addition, as Aubrey mentioned, as we are working with other, uh, service providing partners, we will have caseworkers at those locations. So, um, for example, at a, a library at a different part of town, um, Salvation Army. So, um, working on what that schedule looks like based on their capacity and, um, the ability to, to provide those services, um, as easily accessible to our residents as we can.
Okay. The application will be available online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and that probably will be effective maybe hopefully next Monday or Tuesday?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, one other question. In looking at the, both of the resolutions, it's my understanding that all of the payments will be made to, uh, the service providers, either the landlord, utility companies or the mortgage companies, correct? And not to the family?
Correct. Yeah. So to the, to the childcare provider. Yeah. To the, to the vendor, not to the individual.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that is that in the resolutions on the second pages, and it's, I just can't get clear in my mind, the third whereas, it said the resident support program will provide up to ten thousand dollars to qualifying residents. Uh, and I guess the word two has got me concerned. Would it not be better if it says on behalf of the qualifying residents? Because this makes it look like you're going to give the money to the actual applicant. And that's not what's happening. Or am I reading too much into it?
Yeah, I think that was just a part of the whereas clause is to give the background on it's a benefit that's going to the individual, but still the, the details of how the program is administered is, uh, further in the, later in the resolution where it states that it would be provided to the, um, to the providers.
Okay, okay. My last question. Um, I, with this program, will there be some type of, uh, uh, media, uh, letting the, uh, those people who could qualify, will there be some type of publicity? Either on the radios or through the newspapers or something, letting the general public know that the assistance is available?
And, and Aubrey, I'll let you kind of fill in. Um, but yes, sir. So one of the positions that we're, um, going to have in place is a marketing person that can help us with that messaging and the appropriate placement. Um, but we are using as, um, a, a front door, if you will, uh, two one one, which is the standing call number for any person that's looking for assistance of any kind. Um, and so, so two one one knows that the callers to forward to the center. Um, but yes, in addition to that, we'll have information online. Um, and then coming up with, um, a communication plan of how to get, how to let people know that, um, are, that are eligible for these dollars that, that this help is in place.
Yeah. Mr. Pettis, I think we had also talked about the city itself, um, realizes that this support program is, is going to expire in December, but people's needs are going to occur over the next six months. So we are not intending to do like one communication push at the beginning of the program at the launch. We know that we need to communicate with residents throughout the next six months about these programs. The city itself will, um, provide as much information as we can, plus our community peers partners have really focused on the, on the outreach and the marketing piece of it by providing that position that can really stay in close contact with the community throughout the duration of the program.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Uh, I know that there was a similar program developed and they were supposed to put ads in, uh, newspaper articles and to this day it hasn't been done. So I, I, I trust that you guys will, you know, will do, will do that. And if you were developing a marketing, uh, plan to have an ongoing, um, you know, media blitz for the residents, that would certainly be great. I think it's, it's a good, it's a good program. It'll help a lot of people, but the families have to know that it exists.
Yes, thank you. Well, and, and just to, to add one more component, um, we have begun conversation with the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the other school districts, um, within, uh, the Oklahoma City boundaries as they have, uh, typically pretty good, um, communication, um, opportunities or, or knowledge with their families. So, so we can tap into, um, the connectivity and the relationships that those districts have as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Thanks, Teresa.
One, one other thing. When a person calls two one one next week, they just need to mention the name of this program and they will route them to the right person for their assistance?
Generally, yes. I think the, the two one one, um, operators know the questions to ask, uh, to help steward people to the right resources.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you for the, for clearing it out. And I appreciate Ms. McDermott for asking, answering my questions, you know, throughout the last couple of weeks or so. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Any other comments, questions from council?
This is David Greenwell. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Pettis. He, he, he brought forth a lot of good comments and, uh, some good questions. I have one. So the, the new, uh, facility that will be housing this operation, is the cost of having that facility included in the six hundred thousand dollar administrative, uh, amount?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And, and then just further clarification. So it's my understanding funds will be paid to third parties, whether it's for rent, utilities or any other costs that can be demonstrated. But we're not providing any kind of additional assistance such as for food or anything like that, that an individual could get some cash from this fund?
This.
Aubrey, do you want to answer?
Yeah, the, the resident support, um, categories does include food distribution. And in other communities, the food distribution, um, programs are things like what we did with Embark, where we did mobile food distribution, where you actually contract with a sub-agency to do the types of, um, uh, food distribution that you might need if somebody is housebound and needs a delivery. So I imagine that this would be something that you could contract directly with those groups to get food into people's hands rather than giving them a cash dispersment to go buy groceries.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Vice Mayor, um, I just want to also say thank you to, uh, Ms. McDermott and, and anyone involved with crafting, this work. I, it's just critical. I am so worried about, uh, the rest of the year as it relates to this, um, historic pandemic and I'm very appreciative that we have you all stewarding, um, these funds. And camera, okay, I forgot I turned it off. Uh, so, yeah, so thank you. The, when it comes to the marketing side of this, um, I understand we're going to have someone doing that. Um, I would just ask us to consider some non-traditional, um, places where one might, um, bring this to our residents' attention. Snapchat, which I don't even have, but I'm to understand is a very popular place. Um, Instagram, uh, Twitter, um, I love new, I love newspapers. I used to write for one when I was the opinion editor at the O'Callaghan during grad school. But I don't think that that, we shouldn't assume that our, especially our, uh, Gen Z and a lot of millennials are, um, are reading that print edition of stuff. They are, you know, I do find myself very frequently going to, uh, the online versions of the New York Times or the Washington Post or News OK. But just really thinking about where, where are our people? And you know, I wish more people read the news than a lot do, but I can tell you after teaching, um, a lot of years of college, I have, my students have disabused me of that belief. And so just thinking, what are some non-traditional, um, places to, um, to reach, reach folk, I think is, is pretty important.
No, I, I kind of think that social media is no longer non-traditional. It's becoming traditional.
Yeah.
But yes, absolutely.
I would agree.
I know that our, uh, our Public Information Office, uh, actively uses social media and will be promoting the cares programs as well as I can speak for Teresa, acknowledging that we need to get communication to the residents in multiple ways. So, um, and Teresa, did you want to also respond about that?
No, I think I, I echo what you just said and you know, I haven't seen a media plan in, in some period of time that, um, social media and the variety of platforms were not a, a core piece of that. So, um, Councilman, I think your, your, um, your comments are exactly right. That's the, one of the critical ways of reaching some of our, our residents included.
And then, yeah, thanks. And I, I love, um, the little infographics and I, I hope that that's part of their, their. Cause I would love to be able to share those sorts of things once everything comes online. Is, when do we start? Is it next week? Is that what I heard? That the people can call the two one one? This is the International Assembly. One one, this is the finger.
Yes, that's, that's our, we're, we're planning to, to be open for business. Um, yeah, early part of next week.
Do we anticipate going into next week, having those sort of shareable graphics like that? Or what are we kind of thinking?
And, and that I do not know. I don't have, um, an update on the timing of the, the marketing plan. I do know that, um, there's been some work done on putting all of that together. Honestly, right now we're, um, our marketing folks, I mean, our, our IT folks are focused on getting the application pulled together, having it talk to the other systems. You know, have, getting, getting the, the bones and the, the core essential infrastructure in place so that we can operate, um, with them, with an eye to and doing some collateral work on, um, the marketing piece.
And am I understanding this correctly when I look at, um, stuff like rental assistance? This is for also property owners, like if someone owns a, a business, um, or they own, um, yeah, they own like a, a property, but the leases have, you know, shops or whatever in there. They're also eligible. I just want to make sure I'm hearing that correctly.
We would, we would probably refer them to the business support program for that. This is really just for individual resident needs.
Okay. So that one's for that particular thing. And, and but they will, all, all three of these, the testing, the, um, one you just mentioned, and then this one, all three of these are going to have a pretty active social media component, I'm guessing though, in terms of marketing them?
I know that the city's, um, social media will be active for all of our cares opportunities, including all three of these programs. And then individually, I think that those different agencies we're contracting would do more than what the city would do. So Oklahoma City County Health Department, I'm sure, you know, would do that. Alliance will do that. I've seen other people like the Chamber kind of pick up on, on, um, programs that they tweet out on behalf of, you know, what's available in the community. So I think we're going to get the word out through multiple ways.
I'm, I'm asking all this because I'm trying to figure out how going into next week I'm able to, to share as much as I can with, um, with the good people on, um, on Instagram and Facebook. So thanks for answering those questions. That's it. Thanks.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Um, I know one of the, one of the things that I had mentioned when we were having previous conversations was how do we ensure, uh, that we're getting it into our most vulnerable communities? I know we did mention, um, places like libraries. Have we confirmed any of those locations for this, for folks to be?
And I, I, I cannot sit here and tell you the, um, exact locations. I know that, uh, as Aubrey mentioned, the executive director that we've hired has, um, been reaching out and making some of those contacts, but I, I don't have with me a schedule. But as soon as we get that put together, I will get it to Aubrey and she can share it with all of you.
And Councilwoman, I did relay to the executive director, the list of locations that we had discussed. And I know she's putting together a pretty comprehensive list with other partner agencies around the community. So, um, I think that list is going to grow and evolve as we start making connections with other, other service providers and just looking at trying to get as many, um, satellite locations as, as we can that meets people's needs where they are. So i- if you had any other thoughts about places that we might need to reach out to, please let us know in any, you know, in any ward that feels that they need, um, a satellite location to go out. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will take a motion on item nine J. I have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher?
Yes.
Thank you. And the item passes. Next up on the agenda, item K.
Go back to this. Yes, on this item, uh, a few weeks ago, actually, we introduced on May the 12th and then had a public hearing on May 26th, a resolution of allocating funds from, uh, Golt. Uh, our Golt funds to be able to provide incentives for, um, Costco to bring their, um, uh, facility here. And in that, uh, a- as we started working through the details of the agreement, the economic development agreement, um, it was identified that there were some errors that were in the average wage information that was provided to the council. We provided information to the council, um, giving, um, some support for, uh, what happened in this situation. But I wanted Kathy, just Kathy O'Connor with the Alliance for Economic Development, just to give us an overview here of what we're doing. Uh, we're just going to amend the agreement to reflect the corrected numbers. And it's both in the average wage as well as the employment. So I'll let Kathy give us an overview. And then we have Mike Stratus with this, uh, representing Costco to, uh, discuss more about the agreement.
Yes, as we began to work on the economic development agreement with Costco, Costco realized that they had provided us with some incorrect wage information. And, um, so the purpose of the resolution today is to correct that, make that correction. But also during negotiations, Costco would like to add an additional five hundred jobs, making the total one thousand five hundred and three jobs. making the total 1,503 jobs over the next five to seven years, allowing a couple of extra years of ramp up to hire those additional 500 people. Just to kind of go through what the changes are, the first year wage has decreased. Pardon me? Somebody, okay, from $44,606,000 a year to $38,299. In the final year, the wages, I believe, are just a few thousand dollars different. I'll have to pull up that document to look at it. Because of the additional numbers of jobs, the average annual payroll has increased to almost $81 million a year from the 62 million that was in the original item that went to council. So the overall economic impact of this project has increased substantially from the original proposal, but we did want to make that correction to the, to the average wage information. Mike, I don't know if you, Mike Stratus, I don't know if you want to add anything more or if we want to just respond to questions at this point, but I think that.
No, I, yeah, I have nothing really to add. You know, I apologize on behalf of my client who was human, human error involved in the original calculation. But other than that, I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Hammond, and I know I asked this after our, our small briefings that we received on this item. I guess I'm still just, and, and the answer was, I, I was given an answer, although I'm still, I just still don't feel very clear. And so I think having Mike on the line, I'd like to ask it again. I'm just still not clear how, because in my mind, if the, if the number was wrong, the number was wrong and we get that human error happens. But in my mind, that means that we would, you know, just go ahead and reduce the allocation. So I'm just not clear as how all of a sudden there's an opportunity for, you know, almost 500 more jobs rather than just reducing the allocation.
Well, I mean, I think we would have reduced the allocation if Costco hadn't determined that they wanted to bring more jobs to Oklahoma City. The reality is they like this market. They think we can support 1,500 jobs. And at the 1,500 job number and the, the, the new salary amounts, it supports a $3 million economic development incentive.
So I'm just hearing that when the number, the salary number was higher, they just didn't think that they could have that many jobs at that salary. Is that kind of, am I repeating that back correctly?
Well, that was their thinking at the time. Yeah. I mean, I think when, when they initially came to us and proposed that, they were thinking 1,000 jobs. You know, they, they have identified a building they wish to, to purchase, and I think it can support more employees. So that may have driven their decision somewhat. Mike may want to speak more to that than I can. But I think the reality is they like the Oklahoma City market and want to bring more jobs here. Like I said, if it had stayed at the, the 1,000 job number at the lower wages, we would have had to have a discussion about reducing the amount of, of incentive.
Yeah, I can provide a little clarity. The, the, the wage information was human error. The increase in the jobs is due to the constantly evolving situation with Costco, worldwide sales, COVID, and the fact that we just bought a division of Sears called Sears Logistics Innoval two months ago. And they're trying to figure out, well, how many people can we actually, you know, max out in Oklahoma City based on the investment? So the good news is we're thinking we can put more and more people to work in Oklahoma City, but it is constantly in a state of flux. So I was very pleased that they were able to increase the numbers of jobs. And I, as I'm sure you can imagine, I cautioned them to be extra careful, given, you know, our, our error in the wages. But I think overall, the impact is, is, you know, pretty much equal to or better what we originally subscribed to. The other thing is that when we originally were looking at the numbers, we were really focused on the one, two and third year wages. We weren't focused as much on the fourth and fifth year. And, and this is our, our issue is that Costco has not engaged in one of these payroll tax incentive agreements before. So we're new at this. So anyway, that, those are my only comments.
Hey, Mike, this is Mark Stone Cypher, Ward A. First. I just want to emphasize that I am getting calls over and over and over about how excited people are about this project and the operations that Costco will be bringing to Oklahoma City. A couple of things, you, you mentioned 1,503 jobs, but that doesn't include all the additional part-time jobs, which it's my understanding is going to be close to 300. Is that correct?
It depends on which year, but yes, there will be a significant percentage of part-time jobs that are not included in that 1,503.
And the other thing I want to thank you for, and please tell Costco management this, that we appreciate you investing in Oklahoma City by now seeking to purchase a 225,000 square foot building for $26 million that would have soon set completely dormant. And so we are most appreciative. The additional overall wages that the 1,503 people are going to bring, going from a $62 million a year to an $81 million a year is really appreciated by a lot of folks. Thank you.
All right. With that, on item K, I would take a motion.
On?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper. Councilman Cooper, did you have something?
No, you're fine. Um, thank you. Now, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. I appreciated the question Councilwoman Hammond asked. I appreciated the clarification I heard on that as well. While I am happy to hear the number of jobs will come here with Costco, and you all heard me a few weeks ago describe why I feel, you know, incentives for larger businesses and would like to see more of that conversation focused on our small businesses. And I look forward to having those conversations. It seems like that's a direction we're going to explore. I, the reason why I was able to vote yes for Costco a few weeks ago is because of their belief in social responsibility and, and providing good wages and, and benefits. Whereas too many of our, of our countries' corporations don't. It, it, it felt, it still feels a little off to me that we have this moment where, you know, here's, here's the agreement and now we're coming back and more jobs, but at this lesser, lesser wage. So I want to walk you all through a couple of things that I have. One is I had reached out to Economic Alliance, asked them, and maybe if Joanna or Kathy, I don't know if you were looped in on this, but I had asked about housing data for Oklahoma City in the metro. And received a response that talked about for each of the five years of Costco's average annual wages. How would, would those wages on a year-by-year basis allow for a, a single individual to be able to afford a one-bedroom home? And what would a two-bedroom look like? I don't know if, if someone from Economic Alliance, Kathy, if you want to speak to what those numbers showed us or I can, but I'm happy to hear from you.
What, however you want to do it. So what we, what Joanna pulled, Joanna McSpatten pulled this data together and provided it to Councilman Cooper in response to his questions. And what, what we did is we took the average wage for each year of the Costco ramp up. So starting at the $38,299 in year one and going up to $53,876 in year five. And then we took the fair market rent rates per HUD. So these are the ones that we would use to calculate affordability. So fair market value is 100% of market rate. And developed a table that looked at fair market rates, fair market rent for efficiencies, one, two, three and four-bedroom apartments or homes. And what we found is that in every year at the, at the $38,000, a person can afford an efficiency of one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. Only in year five can that one person afford a, a three-bedroom living unit. And the four bedrooms are always a little bit beyond that affordability calculation. So I think it's a good indication, first of all, we have a very affordable market, thank goodness, and that these wages are significant enough to be able to afford housing at a lot of, in a lot of different varieties of types.
Yeah, I, that, that was my major concern. My major, major concern was making sure that they could. And it appears that they can. I think the other thing that still makes me inclined to support this incentive are a couple of things. One is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Costco does not receive the incentives until they provide these jobs.
Right. So all, all of our incentive agreements with any company that, that are tied to job creation are pay-for-performance. And so we will enter into an agreement, hopefully within the next few weeks with Costco. And then at the one-year mark, we will get the wage calculation, the data about how many jobs they created, what their average wage was, the whole, the breakdown. And based on that data, we would provide them the, the first year's incentive. Typically, our agreements cover, I think it's a five to seven-year time span. So this agreement would be just like that. So yeah, we'll pay the, we'll pay the incentives out over time and they won't receive the entire 3 million if they don't create the jobs and they don't have the average wages that they've, that they include in their economic development agreement.
Thank you for that. Am I understanding correctly, Costco, and just using them as the example in this particular instance, they have the incentive to create as many of these jobs at these levels as possible because that's what allows them to receive more of the incentive?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at how the agreement is crafted. And every one of these is a little bit different, but typically we end up calculating an amount per job. So I, I'm going to take $2,000 per job since that math kind of works out. So if they create 500 jobs in the first year, they would get 500 times 2,000 as their incentive payment. And then in the next year, the, the calculation would happen again and they would get another payment up, up to the $3 million amount. But not, it's a, it's a not-to-exceed amount.
So again, they have incentive to hold to their.
Right. Yes, and they have an incentive in, in some ways to ramp up more quickly. So like add, add the jobs more quickly because they could receive the money more quickly as well.
The other thing I would point out is this 38,299 as year one, the fact that it allows someone to either, you know, an individual to do an efficiency of one-bedroom or even the, the two-bedroom there, that makes me feel better. I would point out, and oh, and moreover, that they are, that these jobs are not necessarily associated with a college degree. That still remains.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
I think that's critical because as I said, you know, privately, and I'm just going to say this in public too, I, I worried about that 38,299. I thought the closer it got to the wage I used to make with two master's degrees as a middle school teacher before we did that walkout, that, that didn't allow me very, very easily to, to survive. Or not even just that, I, it to thrive, to actually be able to set aside savings. And it wasn't until we fought for and got, got the increases that we did and got closer to that 42 that we see here for year two, that I was able to set aside money. So that just always worries me. That just always worries me. But I feel better. I feel better. But I, I just still think there's going to have to be some trust repaired after this, this moment of, again, you know, human error. But I definitely had a couple constituents reach out to me concerned. So. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy. With that, I'll take a motion on item K.
I'll move the item.
I have a motion to second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
The item passes seven to one.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is item nine L. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, on.
Unmute myself. On this item, this is the Preserve OKC Plan. And this item has, council's been briefed on this, has provided quite some time back. And then it's gone forward to the Historic Preservation Commission. And Jeff Butler, our Planning Director, is going to introduce this item and then introduce Katie Frittl with the Planning Department to present just an overview on the plan.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Vice Mayor, Council. Pleased to, to submit this for your receipt today, the Preserve OKC Plan. The city's first preservation plan, the new, the, what we're doing today is receiving this. It has been adopted by the Planning Commission as an amendment to Plan OKC. And that's, that was done a couple of months back. As you recall, we had a joint session on this a few months ago. And we'll, we'll introduce this and Kay will go into a little bit of detail and then we'll take some questions if you have any. So the, the cities, like I said, it's our, it's our first preservation plan. And it came out of Plan OKC, actually, one of our initiatives, which was in the, the enrich element, which covers a lot of different things, including historic preservation, community character. But this was in order to comprehensively address the identification, retention, preservation and revitalization of the city's cultural, archaeological and architectural resources. Wanted to thank, we have several, we did this in-house, this plan, a big process. We're proud of the work. Katie Frittl led this process along with Angela Yetter and Cameron Connor, Susan Atkinson and several others and stakeholders. We're grateful for all those that, that participated in this process. What the plan does, it's a long-range policy plan and it informs all stakeholders, everybody listening today and members of the community about historic preservation, our resources in the city, what our goals and intentions are, strategies that we want to pursue to make sure that we're maintaining our, our historic resources and improving the situation in the city. And identifies responsibilities for who is going to take what actions. What the plan does not do, it's not a regulatory document. We're not adopting any kind of ordinance here. This is just the adoption of a, of a plan to get to a certain point. So it doesn't change any procedures that we currently have or make new bodies or create new districts or landmarks or anything of the kind. Doesn't override any kind of, any, any current council policies. But it does list a lot of things that, that are the city's intention. And it outlines our policy and our, our goals towards historic preservation. and it outlines our policy and our, our goals towards historic preservation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Frittle, who is our Division Manager for Comprehensive, or excuse me, Current Planning and Urban Design. And she's also been for several years our, our Chief Historic Preservation Officer in the city. And Kay will kind of take us through the plan development process and what the plan, the content of the plan. Are you there, Katie, or you might have muted?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. This is Katie Frittle, Principal Planner for Current Planning and Urban Design. We do have a PowerPoint prepared. I don't seem to be able to share my screen at this moment if, I believe, City Clerk had the PowerPoint as a backup as well. If they can share that on the screen.
Francis Lenders in PIM has it, Katie.
Okay. There we go, great, thank you. So as Jeff already mentioned, yep, we've developed the Historic Preservation Plan based on the recommendations of Plan OKC. If you can go to the next slide. We've gone through this, what the plan does and what it does not do. Next, please. And next one. Again, this plan went through a lengthy development process with various types of public outreach to larger audiences, online surveys, focus groups, stakeholder committee, and has gone through several different levels of review with Historic Preservation Commission, a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and City Council and Historic Preservation Commission, and was adopted by the Planning Commission in April of this year. Next, please. The plan establishes overall principles, purpose, and goals and gives an overview of Oklahoma City's history and historic resources. It provides recommendations through four big ideas and concludes with an implementation matrix to identify specific next steps. Woven throughout the plan is a historic resource inventory. This is a collection of many years' worth of data on thousands of properties and districts across the city that we can use to engage and inform the public and to inform decision makers. The resource is housed in GIS and will be available to city staff and to the public online to access. Next, please. The plan includes an official position on historic preservation that outlines the ways in which the city engages in and benefits from historic preservation and the revitalization of our historic and architectural resources. Next, please. The plan emphasizes that historic preservation does more for our communities than protect our historic places. It contributes to the revitalization of neighborhoods and reinvests in established commercial districts. It invigorates the distinctive, unique areas that define Oklahoma City's character. And historic preservation supports growth patterns that are economically and environmentally sustainable. So the plan's recommendations are put forth in four big ideas similar to the elements that you see in the comprehensive plan. Next, please. The first big idea focuses on strengthening public support for historic preservation by informing the general public and community leaders about the city's historic resources and about the benefits of historic preservation. This big idea focuses on education and awareness ranging from broad activities like walking tours, utilization of historic markers, to more focused outreach like workshops and training for specific professionals and community leaders. Big idea two focuses on the city as a steward of the many historic resources that the city of Oklahoma City controls and manages. This big idea focuses on strengthening our practices for how we maintain the historic resources we already have and ensuring that we consider historic resources in relevant decision-making processes. Big idea three focuses on protecting the historic resources in Oklahoma City through the use of existing tools and development of new tools. The, this big idea addresses the enhanced use of historic resource, the historic resource inventory to better identify historic resources and looking at ways to strengthen existing review and enforcement processes that impact historic resources. It also identifies some potential new tools and approaches that could further strengthen the identification, consideration, and protection of historic resources citywide. And big idea four focuses on encouraging historic preservation through new and existing incentives. Many preservation successes have come from incentive or other assistance programs, from TIF funds to historic tax credits to different grant and loan programs that the city manages. We can work to ensure that existing programs encourage historic preservation beyond financial incentives. We can look at regulations and other mechanisms to remove barriers to the rehabilitation of historic resources. And we can also facilitate the use of incentives like historic tax credits by working with property owners to get buildings and districts listed in the National Register of Historic Places. We had a joint workshop with City Council, Planning Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission back in October, and an additional study session with Planning Commission in February. We incorporated additional information based on those meetings and other public input. Preserve OKC was adopted by the Planning Commission in April and this receipt of the plan by City Council is our last step. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions, comments from council?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey Craig, I just want to make sure, and I'm always looking at what the agenda says. There were a couple of comments using the word adoption, but the agenda only says we are receiving this today. And I want to make sure that we're clear, this is only a receipt of something, it's not an adoption of this plan. And that gives council people time to, to look at this, study it. And for example, in my ward, there's a neighborhood called Quail Creek that some people talked about historical preservation. And I, I'm hopeful that we get to let them look at this and give some input. So I want to be clear that what we sent the public notice, we sent out, says we are just receiving this today, not adopting.
This is Katie, that's correct. This is following the same procedure we follow anytime you all receive an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Usually those are for things related specifically to a property. But this is the same type of process. It's an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission adopts it, City Council receives it. So that's what's recorded with all of the notices and documents related to this action.
Am I hearing that correctly, that we, we received this, then this goes to Planning Commission for them to vote whether or not to adopt? Or what am I not hearing?
Planning Commission, this is Katie Frittle, sorry. Planning Commission has already adopted the plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. After they adopt amendments to the comprehensive plan, those amendments come to City Council for you to receive them. So it's adopted by Planning Commission and following that action, City Council receives the amendment.
So what's the next step with this? I know, I knew that they had done that with the, and OKC. What's the next step with this after we received this today?
So the next step, there's no other formal step to adoption or receiving or taking any kind of action on the plan itself. The next step for us is to begin implementing the various recommendations of the plan, working on all of the different policies and action steps that are laid out in the plan and in the implementation matrix. So anything like that, that's going to have any kind of an impact, if it was an ordinance amendment or development of some sort of new tool, all of those things are going to come back to Planning Commission, City Council for additional review and adoption as necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, so to Councilman Stonecifer's point, there's just going to be moments where specific things are going to come back up that will come before these two different bodies, Planning Commission and City Council.
Yes, so for instance, as the example he made, if, if that neighborhood said, you know, we've read this plan, we think that we would really love to be a historic district, we would then work with them through that established process on how to become a historic district. Other, you know, if we said, we, we need a new ordinance to address some preservation issue that's occurring, or we need to amend an ordinance that addresses historic resources. All of those things would come back to you for further action. This is a bigger picture kind of policy document. Here are things that we think as a city are important. Here are some of the steps that we could take to make those things happen. But those smaller steps along the way will come back for, for, for the review.
Katie, I just want to make sure that if we, and Amanda, if you're on, or Kenny, if we have thoughts or ideas on this, we can make recommendations back to the Planning Commission.
Yes, you can. To clarify, only the, the Planning Commission has the authority to adopt a comprehensive plan, but City Council can provide input.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, I will take a motion on item L. We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer? You're muted, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilperson Cooper?
I don't see one here.
He'll be shown his absence.
Thank you. And the other classes.
I got kicked out of there. I'm, I got kicked out.
I'm sure it was an accident, Councilman.
I'm serious, I got, what?
All right, thanks, it's item nine, yeah, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, this item is similar to the previous item. This was on the City Sustainability Plan. Gone through a simple review process, been open for public comment and has gone to the Planning Commission and been adopted by the Planning Commission today. Jeff Butler will introduce the item and then turn it over to T.O. Bowman in the Planning Department to just provide an overview of the Sustainability Plan.
You, Jeff Butler, again, Planning Director. Francis, if you wouldn't mind, oh, it looks like we got it, okay. T.O.'s going to share his presentation and I'll, I'll start off. But just to introduce the plan, Adapt OKC, we'd like to, to thank all those that have participated. Again, this was led by the Office of Sustainability, which is housed in the Planning Department. And that's been there since 2015. And we've been working on this for a couple of years and we're happy to have it in front of you today for a receipt. And again, like as was mentioned with Preserve OKC, Adapt OKC is also an amendment to Plan OKC. The Planning Commission does have statutory authority to adopt comprehensive plans and this is an amendment to that, just as Preserve, Preserve OKC. So this was already adopted by the Planning Commission and it's in front of you for receipt today. So we just want to thank again our staff, T.O. Bowman, which will take over for me in a second here, and Ryan Baker, make up our Sustainability Office, and the many experts that consulted with us and stakeholders. The purpose of the plan, again, another first here, the first Sustainability Plan for Oklahoma City is to strengthen our community in the face of economic, environmental, and social challenges. That's from the plan itself. We look at sustainability as a pragmatic process that utilizes significant research and analysis. And if you look at the plan, you will see, anybody who looks at it, it's apparent from a quick glance that there's a lot of, a lot of that that was involved in this case. And we want to do that as localized as possible so that we can anticipate future needs and identify ways to address them in a way that's customized to Oklahoma City. This is our plan and we're excited that we're able to get so much good information and localized data so that we can have a really accurate picture and make accurate projections. So what, again, this may look familiar, we kind of use the same format for both presentations. What does the plan do? Again, Adapt OKC is also a long-range plan and policy document. It informs many groups about our, about our goals and priorities. It expresses our vision through goals and initiatives, which T.O. will take us through some highlights there. And it recommends and prioritizes strategies and actions. It identifies responsible parties and what they're responsible for and also indicators to monitor progress as Plan OKC does as well. What it does not do, again, it does not override council policies or direction that's already been. It does, does not modify purview of decision-making bodies, doesn't create new regulations or guidelines or establish new programs, does make a lot of recommendations. So as we discussed with the last item, and you will see in, in the near future, you will see modifications to proposals to modify certain things that we do and to make certain improvements in the city that are outlined in the plan. And those will come before you as, as the months and the years go by. So with that, I will pass it over to T.O. Bowman, who again is our Sustainability Manager, leads our Sustainability Office, and he'll explain the details of the plan.
Thank you, Jeff, and City Manager and Council. So the Sustainability Plan, I, I feel like it's important to explain, while it is a Sustainability Plan, we chose to call it Adapt OKC. The terms are complementary, but they're distinct. Sustainability meaning that we don't want to use up resources so there's not any for future generations. And adaptation meaning a, a dynamic process of perpetual improvement, of refinement. And so it's this idea of both resource conservation and continuous improvement that this plan was developed. And so why do we need to adapt? In short, it's to mitigate risk. Moody's Investor Services just last year indicated that a sustainability or climate adaptation plan are credit positive. Both the National Climate Assessment, version four, and a regional project that our office participated in with cities from five states offered, they're, they're highly, expressed high confidence in the fact that Oklahoma City residents will continue to experience the effects of climate change. And what that looks like in Oklahoma City is an increase in average annual temperatures and an increased risk of flash flooding events. Now, an, an average annual temperature increase is hard to digest for, for a layperson, but, but what it translates to is by mid-century, we'll see up to twenty-seven more days of the hottest two percent of days. So those are days that are fall between ninety-five and a hundred degrees. And again, that's by mid-century and that affects nights too. So the, the two percent warmest nights that don't fall below seventy or seventy-five degrees, we're going to see up to thirty-five more of those. So there are, there are quite a few implications for that. One of those impacts is that will increase residents' energy consumption, specifically electricity use. And so that also increases their energy burden. So the energy burden represents the growing proportion of the household income that is spent on paying utility bills. And as we know, with, with economic disruptions and things that are going on right now, that can be a, a really big sum, a really big deal. And so that, that will also increase the cost of city operations. So that's, those are mainly the reasons why we need to address some of these issues. And how we do adapt is we seize the opportunities that are there. We, we increase our efficiency, we reduce emissions, create more quality jobs with good wages, mitigate effects of extreme weather, and consider lifecycle costs through our, with our investments.
A little bit, no.
Hello? Okay, thought I heard somebody. The plan was modeled after Plan OKC and best crap, best practices around the country. And like Plan OKC, and Jeff mentioned, it has an implementation matrix that specifies policies and actions and start-by dates. You'll notice that water conservation, something that's, that's typically included in sustainability, isn't here. With, there, there is a Oklahoma City Water Conservation Plan that exists and other complementary plans that we've coordinated with and, and definitely will support as we continue through implementation. So the first chapter is Energy Productivity and centers on a transition to cleaner sources of energy, diversifying our energy economy and reducing the cost of municipal operations. Whether avoided costs in new facilities or return on investments through renovations and remodels, energy efficiency must be an inseparable and essential operating principle for city projects. And as the years grow increasingly hotter, Adapt OKC encourages, encourages us to be proactive with policies and programs that will support affordability for residents, businesses, and institutions through efficiency and modern building considerations. Second chapter is Natural and Built Environment. And it, and I'll, excuse me, it outlines proactive solutions to maintain complementary relationship between the natural and built environments, specifically related to extreme heat, water quality, and healthy food access. So by increasing tree and vegetation. So by increasing tree and vegetation cover, making roofs and hardscapes cooler, building stronger and employing low impact development techniques. We can mitigate the negative effects of extreme heat and flooding on public health, local watersheds and municipal infrastructure. Air quality has a lot built into it, it's one of our longest chapters, but it has two major pushes and and one is to reduce emissions associated with transportation. But also to advocate for increases in transportation infrastructure funding, something that the city hears routinely from residents that that they would like to see roads and bridges worked on more often. And so we have major challenges in that area, as as you may have heard in the in previous years. But when we look at transportation emissions, aside from greenhouse gas emissions, there are criteria pollutants. And those are the things that the EPA establishes thresholds for, so that's nitrous oxides and volatile organic compounds. With and those largely come from tailpipe emissions. So when those are combined with sunlight on a hot windless day, that's what creates ground level ozone or smog. So this creates a public health hazard. And and it can create an economic hazard if we exceed that threshold established by the EPA and and go into what's considered non attainment. So I'll spare the the intricacies of what all of that entails today, but but what you can know is that Oklahoma City's air quality right now is trending in a positive direction with with less pollutants. However, this is not due to us driving less, this is because our vehicles are more efficient, cafe standards have been in place. And and there's there is more efficiency of a vehicle, so we in fact drive quite a bit here in Oklahoma City, as you know, and 86% of our commutes are single occupancy vehicles. We don't see that dramatically changing in the next five to 10 years in the near future. But what we do see is opportunities with with alternative fuels, making low and no emission commutes. And then also continued investments through through embark and and public transit improvements and the the bike walk OKC plan and implementation. So the investments in bus shelters and and route optimization and all the all the great things that embark is doing are also a part of this strategy and moving us forward. So all of that to say, more efficient vehicles and more alternative fuels on the roads will continue to reduce the funding that the city receives from fuel taxes and fuel taxes intended to repair our roads. Right now, we receive gas taxes that come in at about a million dollars every year, not very much considering how big of a city we are. And then we are at the crossroads of America, I 35 and I 40, we see a lot of freight traffic, a lot of heavy trucks. And we that the city receives $0 from diesel taxes, so so we 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 see a bit of a challenge there, but also an opportunity. And then finally, waste reduction, this chapter supports the growth of materials recovery industries, protects valuable land for future growth and integrates lifecycle considerations into our purchasing decisions. This plan acknowledges our role as a primary stakeholder in the disposal practices of metro area and it proposes exploring options that will increase waste diversion from sectors beyond just our residential program like multifamily and office buildings. And again, here's my name and and information and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bowman, I just have one question for you, did we investigate the use of rollover curbs at all?
I I did not through this plan, did not. Be happy to look into it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Butler, Mr. Bowman?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you help? I know you've mentioned the rollover curbs before, would you re enlighten me? I this is something I think matters a lot to you, I'm just curious why.
It's it, so the rollover curb is not a 90 degree curb face. I know you've seen them in some neighborhoods, it's basically you drive over the curb to get in your driveway. So instead of being a 90 degree face, it might be a 45 degree face on the curve. What it what it does is it makes it so that you don't have to cut out the existing curb to put in a driveway. Saves concrete helps with the integrity of the street, is my belief.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will take a motion on item M. Have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Greenwell.
All right, the items passed unanimously. Next on the agenda. Item nine N, resolution calling for a special city council meeting to be held at 8:30 AM on Thursday, July 16, 2020. Hold a briefing and discussion of the COVID-19 issues with the Oklahoma City County Board of Health, at the subject center, use a call. Any comments or we can take a motion? All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes, please.
And the item passes unanimously. All right, up next, item 01. Is the collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Local 2406. I've been told that we do not need executive session with this, so with that, I would take a motion. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
Councilperson Cooper.
And the item passes. Next up on the agenda is item P1. This is a resolution approving for the request of salary continuation for Corporal Terry Allen. While it continues to require rehabilitation, recover from non the job injury for up to an additional six months. I will take a motion. Have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
And the item passes unanimously. Next up is item Q1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Aaron Etheridge. While it continues to require rehab to recover from non the job injury for up to an additional six months. I think on this item, we can take a motion. Have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
And that item passes eight zero. Next on the agenda, nine R1 is a resolution authorized municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Andrew Heis and Megan Heis. Individually and as husband wife under added to the city of Oklahoma City. And I will take a motion on this item.
To move it to executive session. Okay.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, are we doing executive session or adopting?
No, for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
The item passes eight zero. Next on the agenda is nine S1. And on this item, we will need to move it to executive session. Evidently, I messed up a little bit when we tried to move it to executive session under OCMFA, so we definitely want to do that here. In the meantime, I do have a citizen that signed up to speak. May Vryapa. Mayor, are you with us? You may need to hit star six to unmute your phone.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi, I'm May Vryapa, I'm from Ward five. I just wanted to make a quick comment about the agenda item real quick about my own concerns about it. My first concern is first off, looking at Collins, Zorn and Wagner and how they are a very high end, successful law firm. I think this will just send a message of, you know, where our investment is coming from and how our protection of police officers are looking in terms of if we compare it to how our public defenders are often under budgeted, overspread, etc. So it looks as if the commitment of the council and its investment of money. When you saying Collins, Zorn and Wagner is like a very high end in comparison to the quality of public defenders that we give to our community members who can't afford defense for themselves. And I I just don't think that's a message that is necessarily something that the council would want to portray. And I mean, I also support like moving into an executive session. I think that there's a lot of nuances to this particular place, especially in this political climate that are not that cannot necessarily be addressed right now without maybe a deeper understanding. I'm not really sure, maybe you guys can clarify, I'm kind of new to this of what like exactly executive session is, all I have is Google at my hands, so I'm not really sure what the actual context of that would mean, but I think I do. So if you guys could clarify what that means, that'd be great, but that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mike.
Executive session is an opportunity for council to go into with their legal counsel in order to obtain legal information and advice related to the litigation.
So, Mayor, I hope that clears that clarified that for you. I would entertain a motion to move item S to move item S into executive. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
Thank you. And it passes eight zero. Next on the agenda is nine T1, claims recommended for denial. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak on any of these items? I'd entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
Item passes eight zero. Next on the agenda, item 10. A1 Claims Recommended For Approval. I would entertain a motion on this one. Have a motion in a second, please cast your votes, items don't tied into them, but Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
I would, yes, okay, thank you. And that item passes eight zero. Up next is item 11, items from council. We can start with item A from Councilman Cooper. Councilman Cooper.
There it is. Um, so I I'm going to ask us to defer this again because I have a meeting, our transit committee has a meeting on, I believe, Thursday. Yeah, we have an upcoming meeting to talk about some changes to some routes and I I really need to hear from embark about what they're proposing before I do a deeper dive into this, so I don't, I I don't know what sort of timeline we can do, I don't really necessarily feel a rush to this, this can be something we do at the end of the month, as far as I'm concerned, but I need to, I need to talk to KOPA because they just sent out an agenda for our transportation committee within KOPA to look at some route frequency times and I need to understand what's going on on their end before I.
Would we be better to strike the item and then just we could reenter it and put it back in whenever you're ready? That way, it wouldn't just constantly roll back to the next agenda.
Yeah, let's do that, city manager, thank you.
Okay. Do we need to vote to strike the item?
I need to make a motion to strike?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to strike the item, please.
Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
And it passes eight zero. Next item is 11B, a resolution appointing Jason Gladwell as municipal judge effective July 1, 2020 through July 1, 2022. Councilman Stone cipher, you're the chair of the council judiciary committee, you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, the next three items B, C and D, and I'll do this all at once to, I know we're going to have to vote on it separately, but this is the result of the work of the judiciary committee, it is our recommendation that the city council take the following action. It deals with the appointment of two judges and the appointment of of the the vice municipal judge. And so the first item is to reappoint Jason Gladwell as municipal judge effective July 1, 2020 through July 1, 2022, please.
All right, I'll take a motion on item 11B. We have a first and a second, please cast your votes, Councilman Stone cipher.
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Item 11C is a resolution appointing Donald O Kiffin as municipal judge effective July 1, 2020 through July 1, 2022. Do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And it passes eight oh. Next item on, is item D, a resolution designating Donald O. Kiffin as vice presiding judge effective July first, 2020 through July first, 2021. And do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion on that, but I'd also like to say that I am very proud and honored that Judge Kiffen will hopefully serve after this vote today as the vice presiding judge. He does an outstanding job, and he's an excellent judge.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And the item was passed eight to zero. Next up, eleven E. This is a resolution appointing Jeffrey Black, Carson Carter, Marilyn Coulson, Clint Cohen, Robert Gidford, Larry Hazelwood, Gary Henry, Tracy Rome, Shanae Roby, Sarah Stewart Maldonado, Walter Suttle, Meltem Carla Tenka, Eleanor Thompson, Margaret Travis, Philip Winters, and Paula Wood as special judges to a term of office beginning July first, 2020 and expiring June 30th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'd move the item.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
And the item passes eight to zero. All right, with that, we're going to go around the virtual shoe here, and we'll start with Ward one, Councilman Greiner.
I don't have anything today. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to Ward two with the infamous Councilman Cooper.
Yes, um, I will, I'll keep my remarks brief today because I've spoke quite a bit for the month of June. I was wondering if someone could speak a little bit more to an item I had started earlier, and it slipped away from me. This was on item B under the consent document, yeah, docket rather, seventy. I was just curious, I'd received an email that started the council meeting from a constituent who was wanting a little bit more information on the ways in which we expend those funds. I, I've long been a fan of the Center for Employment Opportunities, but this constituent just had some questions. I was wondering if someone could speak to them.
Yeah, so Chris, we have Chris Browning and Eric Winger both on the line here as well, but basically we've been, this is the fourth year that we've been working with CEO. Back when we started working with them a few years ago, we had done some research and looked into them, worked with them on a pilot program temporarily. Things worked out really well. It's a reasonable pricing that we get, but it's giving people an opportunity to do some work, and it's helping them as they're making the transition from incarceration and getting back into employment and having opportunities there. And so it's been a program that's worked really well for us. I know we use them, we'll use a crew for drainage clean, and we use a crew also for litter pickup. There's limitations in the agreements as to what their employees can do as far as like operating equipment and things of that nature. But CEO agrees that they provide all of the personal protective equipment for the workers that, that are working on these crews that they'll need, whether it's like gloves, boots, whatever it is to, to do the work. And our fee is $650 a day for a work crew that's five to seven people, depending on the work that we're doing. And this is something that's worked really well for us. We do have a max on the contract of $300,000, but they've done really good work for us, and I think it's worked out well. Eric and, and Chris are both on and could answer questions on that as well. We could do some additional research, I think, to the questions that you were asking previously into the company and how, you know, how much of the money goes to the workers versus is overhead. Obviously, some of it has to go to overhead to operate the organization, but, but yeah, we could get more information on that. But if you want any, have any questions about how the crews work or what they're doing in relation to the services provided for the city, Chris and Eric could get to, could answer those questions.
Yeah, that seemed to be the, the constituents' main concern was just making sure that the funds, you know, find their way into the, to the workers mostly, more than anything. That's been my understanding of how CEO works, but any information you can provide in terms of that, those cost allocations would, would definitely be helpful.
Okay, we'll go back and look at that again. We've done that previously. It's been a while back, so we'll go back and do that again and get that information for you.
But it is my understanding that the significant chunk of this is going to those workers. It's a for it to pay for their, their work, correct?
Yes, that's what I understand as well.
Okay, yeah. Now, thank you for digging into that. I appreciate you and staff taking time to do so. And that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Cooper. We'll go with Ward five, Councilman Greenwell.
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Ward six, Councilwoman Hammond?
Nothing, thank you.
Oh, did I skip Ward three? I'm sorry. Councilman McAtee, Ward three, I think I skipped you. You're on mute. Looks like what he said was brief, so I'm going to take that as a, as a no. Councilwoman Hammond, did you say no? Thank you. Ward seven, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I know our, our last meeting was a few weeks ago, so I did not get to mention the fact that we were able to recognize and had a proclamation from our mayor for Juneteenth, and we were able to light the Skydance Bridge, the colors of the Juneteenth flag, which I know there was a lot of confusion because a lot of folks had not heard of the Juneteenth flag, but the colors of the flag are red, white, and blue. So there are definitely a lot of significances because of the colors that we tie into the meaning of what Juneteenth brings. And the next, the following day, we were able to also light the, the Skydance Bridge and the red, black, and green liberation colors to commemorate the continuation of Juneteenth. So I'm thankful to the city for us being able to do that. I'll make mention, I know there have been a lot of concerns about a, a street mural that was placed on 36 and Kelly for our community. There was an ask, how could it be done? And the request was to have it done for the event, the Juneteenth event, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do it in the timing because of the, some folks that we had originally, and that said they would help us in that effort that did not work in the timing that was planned for us to have it done. So we were able to get it done, and unfortunately, there was a lot of feedback that came, and I know the following day, or a couple days later, I received a phone call from someone that lives in Oklahoma City that was not pleased with, with what's in place, and said that his tax dollars paid for that to be done. So I just want to make sure I correct the misconception from anyone to realize and, and hopefully to inform that no one's tax dollars paid for that mural to be placed on the street, and it is not permanent. However, we had a lot of donations and volunteers that were out there, and it was a community effort for folks to say how they, they felt at that time in saying Black Lives Matter. And I just want to put emphasis, and that's the conversation that the gentleman and I had, as he wanted to say, you know, everything, all lives matter. And I don't think there's ever been a dispute of us saying that. And he also made mention of how we have black-on-black crime as well. And I, I think we all understand that when you're in your own environment, if you are in a cluster of whatever your culture may represent, you're going to acknowledge and see, unfortunately, crimes against the people that may look like you on arise. So with that, the, to me, in my opinion, the significance of this also being placed there was because we had an incident that did occur after the event that took place on that Saturday of a gentleman who lost his life because of, of an incident that happened. So let me publicly say on this platform that while we say yes, we want all to understand how Black Lives Matter, it's also a message for Black folks to also recognize that we, we matter just as much as we want others to, to see how we matter too. So I just wanted to make mention of that as we continue to go through conversations, uncomfortable conversations about race, uncomfortable conversations about how we have to, we have to have a necessary conversation just to understand where we are, where the injustices are, how we can work together to have the racial reconciliation, and also acknowledge and move forward with correcting history on this side where we are. And I don't think any of us take away from anything that's, that's taken place. Have there been a lot of wrongs in history? Absolutely. Have there been a lot of steps towards better justice? Absolutely. But there's always time to, to do something different and to do something more. And this is the time to do that. And I, I, I hope as we continue to have these conversations, especially with our council meetings and our budget meetings, they've been very intense. And I go back to just the, the racial slurs that we heard in a couple of meetings past. And obviously, again, we still have ways to go. I just opened a letter from a constituent in Oklahoma City who, who obviously wants to condemn me for, for that mural as well, which also means we have ways to go. So I just, again, want to say, no one's saying that all lives don't matter. But what we're saying is we want equity, we want equality, and we want justice for, for the lives that have not been accounted for, and, and for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the injustices that we continue to use and say their names for. So I, I know these will be continued conversations again, and I welcome anyone who may want to, to have a conversation. I was on a, a community perception conversation last night, and it was enlightening to be in a Zoom conversation with folks that just want to talk about what race looks like, how we talk about being uncomfortable again, as I mentioned previously, and how we talk about just how we can work together to ensure that we're talking to others in, in our circles, or those that are not in our circles when it comes to just the uncomfortableness of, of where we are in, in our society right now. So I just wanted to make mention of that, and I'm looking forward to many more conversations to come. And I do want to say and stress to those who may be watching and listening to, please, we had, I believe, over 800 new cases as of yesterday. I think that's what I just read not too long ago, that were reported for COVID-19. So please, if you can, stay safe, wash your hands, wear a mask, and, and stay six feet or face covering, stay six feet, and distance yourself, and socially distance yourself from others in the meantime, because I haven't hugged my mom in months, and I really want to hug her and, and tell her I love her and, and give her a kiss on the cheek. But because she's in that age group, I can't do that. And it hurts that I can't do that. So I, I just ask that we all continue to follow those safety guidelines so we can stay safe for ourselves as well as our, the ones that we love the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward eight, Councilman Stone Cypher?
Todd, every morning I get up and I have kind of the same routine. I go get my coffee, I go to the computer, and I look at different articles about Oklahoma City. It was last Wednesday or Thursday, I was about half awake, when I saw this article that said Oklahoma City ranked one of the best-run cities in the nation. It was provided by KOCH News 25. It says in the article, Oklahoma City has been ranked as one of the best-run cities in the United States. It's ranked as the twentieth, twentieth-best-run city in the nation, the seventh-best for financial stability, and the fourteenth for total budget per capita. And so I just want to, and I always think about it, and I always believe it, but I always want to say thank you to Craig Freeman, the department heads, the assistant city managers, the staff, the employees. You guys do a great job. I'm very proud to be known as the twentieth-best-run city in the nation. I actually think we're first or second, but I'll take 20 for now. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, item twelve, city manager reports. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, we have Kathy O'Connor to do a quick update on the Small Business Continuity Program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Since our last update, we are, we have approved an additional $170,000 of applications. These are the ones from the, the first program that are still in review, where, you know, we've gone back and we're taking a second look at some of those. We're in the process of paying out an additional $2 million as we pay out on more loans. Those were the larger dollar amount items, so that, that'll increase that. To date, we've approved about $5.9 million in applications from the first round. Just as an update on the, on the second round of funding, and the city will be managing the, most of the program through a agreement with a local bank. They issued a request for proposals to banks to provide that, those administrative services, and they expect to get those back tomorrow. The RFP anticipates that we will begin collecting out mid-July, so we're coming up on the next round fairly quickly. And then we'll be bringing back finalized plans as required by council's initial resolutions for the funding. There are some things that we may make some minor adjustments on from what you originally approved, but, so the, the largest part of the program will be grants of up to $100,000 to businesses with, I believe, we're going with 100 employees. And then through the alliance, we'll be administering the technical assistance and the business retrofits part of the program. So the majority of this round will be managed through the city and through that, that banking relationship contract. So that's all I have right now.
All right, if there aren't any questions for Kathy, the last item that we have, we have the claims and payroll on there too, but we also have the June sales and use tax collections, and I, we had provided this to council earlier just because of the timing. We're just, you know, we should already have our check now coming in for July, but because of the timing of the meetings, we wanted to make sure we had this formally presented. We finished the year with sales tax at about a 1.1% decline. Before that, we had been at about a 3% growth. Before probably March, we'd been at about 3% growth. And then with the effects of COVID, and we saw the significant declines the last couple of months, we declined 17.7% in sales tax in June, very similar to what we had decline, decreased or declined in, in May. We finished the year $8.8 million under budget in sales tax, which, which is really significant for us. Use tax, we actually ended about $1 million over target, and so that helped to offset some of the impacts. So we finished the year combined with sales and use tax at about $7.8 million below target. I really do appreciate Councilman Stone Cypher's comments, but I want to say that, that it's, it's really the good management, the strong management of the city, of the employees, and the department directors and their leadership of the city, of the employees and the department directors and their leadership to hold back on costs. We put the hiring freeze in place. We had several vacancies going into that time. So all those measures allowed us to be able to hold back on costs, continue to hold back on costs to finish the year, even though we're below target on our revenues. It allowed us to take care of some year-end needs, make some transfers to take care of some year-end needs, but then to finish with fund balance in a strong position so that we aren't drawing down a lot of fund balance. Really, right now, I think the way things look with addressing some of those year-end needs, we should keep our fund balance about where it was to start the year. And that'll leave us in a good position as we're going into fiscal '21 with just the uncertainty with COVID and what effects that might have and knowing that we may need to have the ability, since we weren't quite as conservative on our projections for sales tax for next year, that we might have the need to draw upon some reserves if things aren't, you know, if we don't see sales tax grow at the levels that we had anticipated. So something we'll continue to monitor, keep an eye on, and make sure that we're updating the council. But I want to say that, you know, it's strong financial management, strong financial position for the city is a reflection of the leadership of this council. And I appreciate your leadership and commitment to that. I also want to recognize, you know, Jim Couch's legacy of how he led the organization for 18 years put us in a much better position coming into these times. And so its recognition goes around to everyone, but also then goes into our leaders in our departments and all of our city employees and the great work that they do to manage resources in a responsible manner. And so I really appreciate that. I appreciate your leadership and commitment to our residents and to the city. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thanks, Greg. Item 13, citizens to be heard. We have a Nick Brook.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, please, Nick, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I signed up to speak on this item a little over a week ago, and I anticipated that the mayor would be here today. This is mostly directed at him, but he's not here today, but I'm sure that he'll catch up afterward. I wanted to say that I appreciate that we have recently changed the masking requirements to require that they be worn by employees, service establishments. That's definitely a step in the right direction, but it is insufficient. While you were all in this meeting, the Health Department announced over 800 cases of COVID-19 were found in Oklahoma just yesterday. The time for masking ordinance, masking requirement at the local government level was weeks and weeks and weeks ago. We said, we just don't have any more time to squander about this. My name is Nick Brook. I'm a mathematician. I work and live here in Oklahoma City. The thing about science is that it's the same no matter where you are on the earth. Somebody can look at you and they can, you know, lie to you about a lot of things, but you can't lie to somebody about science because they can always just go home and try the thing themselves. And I encourage you, if you are not convinced that mask, that masking, a universal masking requirement is necessary and useful to slow the spread of this novel contagious disease, I encourage you to ask, you know, whatever 16- or 14-year-old child in your life that you know, who may have a Girl Scout troop or something that they can get with, this is a very easy science fair project, all right? You just get yourself some agar and a Petri dish, and you cough on it through a mask and without a mask, and just see what they look like about a week later. This is not something you have to take my word for, okay? But it's not something that you can lie to me about any longer either. I'm extremely frustrated when I see the mayor asked about a masking requirement. He will demur and say, oh, well, I'm listening to the scientists on the team. No, you are not. I would encourage you to get some real scientists out in front of the city council at this meeting coming up, because there is no scientist who will look at you with a straight face and say that there is any reason to allow someone to go out in a public place with their face uncovered right now. It is insane. It's completely ridiculous. And I, you know, I've seen, I've got about 35 seconds left, and I've seen those videos on, on the internet of, you know, city councils, they have to listen to some people who, you know, are not exactly educated on scientific issues, and, and they get yelled at for requiring masks. And I can sympathize, right? But I'm an educated, literate person, and I'm here to yell at you for doing the wrong thing. And I hope that my other educated neighbors will bother to show up at these city council meetings every two weeks until you fix this. Thank you very much. I appreciate your hard work. Have a great day.
All right, thanks, Nick. Appreciate your comments. With that, I believe we are ready to recess to the executive session.
Yes, and this will be the same format as before. You will actually leave this council meeting. You will send an email to your OKC.gov email address. And if you didn't get that email, Debbie, Boyd, or Randy were supposed to send it to you. And you will enter a new meeting called Executive Session. And then you'll come back to the council meeting after Executive Session. So good luck, everybody. And you can email me if you have trouble, frances.curse@OKC.gov. I'll be here. James, did you find your email? You're on mute.
Yes, I found my email, and I am about to log in.
Okay. Okay, so I have to get out. Councilman Stonecifer, you are still in the regular city council meeting.
I know that.
Okay. Just, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so. Is anybody there still? Hello?
Yes.
Who's here?
This is Francis Linders, PIO.
Oh, okay. I need to, just needed somebody from IT to give us some help. Thank you.
What do you need assistance with, Councilman?
Well, my assistant has gone to lunch, and so I'm trying to figure out how to get out.
You just need to leave this meeting in Zoom and go to your, your OKC.gov email, and you should have an email in there from Zoom labeled Executive Session, and that's the meeting you need to join.
So do I need to go into Ward A, OKC.gov?
No, it's your mark.stoncifer@OKC.gov.
Thank you. Hello, hello? Anybody still there?
Yes, Councilman, you're still in the main council meeting.
I get it. I've got the head of our IT, he's never done this before. He's going to need a little help.
Okay.
Okay, so what does he, is he, he needs to exit the main meeting?
Where was the email sent at?
To his mark.stoncifer@OKC.gov email.
There should be a red leave meeting button towards the bottom right.
Right, but I'm just.
I think they're trying to make sure they have the email before they leave.
Correct.
Just tell them to start without me if that's okay.
All right, I'll send Francis a message.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm telling the guy. Okay, did you hit the leave button?
Nope.
Well, Francis, you're in the original meeting.
Francis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Todd, are you there?
I agree that they may not have understood it.
Just give us a couple of seconds.
Can you hear me, Todd?
Todd, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can. I can hear everyone. If y'all give me just a second, we'll get started.
I'm glad your first meeting was so easy.
Mr. Stone Cypher.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
I think I know what you're talking about. Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say. No more.
Thank you, sir.
Well deserved.
I don't know about that, but I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that very much.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to do is we need to reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Bear with me a second. And consider item D1. That is the resolution authorizing the firm of Collins, Zorn and Wagner, PC to represent municipal employee Oklahoma City Police Officer Kyle Holcomb. Do I have a motion?
I move the item.
Have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher?
Yes.
Councilman McAtee votes yes.
We still need votes for Cooper, Greenwell, Hammond, and Nice.
Okay, Mickey, Cooper, Hammond, and Nice are absent.
Okay, that just leaves Councilman Greenwell then.
Is he on mute? There he is.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yeah, I vote yes.
And if item passes 5-0, will now adjourn the OCMFA, move back into regular council session. Go to item 9S1, which is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorized the firm of Collins, Orne and Wagner PC to represent municipal employee Oklahoma City Police Officer Kyle Holcomb. I have a motion.
Move the item.
Have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Greenwell, aye.
Councilman Stone cipher? And the item passes 5 to 0. Thanks for coming back in. And with that, I believe the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
You did a good job, Todd. Thank you.